Hey, good evening, everyone. I'm called the regular meeting of the board of selectmen from Connecticut to order. May twenty second, twenty twenty four at six thirty P M. So let's please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands on national, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, quick note to everyone here, but also everyone out there. On behalf of the board, I know everybody would want to thank our community for being so active and so involved with the budget process. And the portal housing, everything else. But the last couple of months, we've seen a real outpouring of people showing up and getting about. Whether, you know, we liked everything we heard or all the comments, you know, were things we wanted to hear. We needed to hear what people had to say, and I think that was really good. So having come through that and got the budget last Friday night and something we can now work off of, we're proud of the work of the board for sure. Hours, which everybody does, I know, but I'm just really appreciative of everybody's work, everybody we work with, all the department heads, all the people from the organizations that we support, and we're still working on. You know, it's really an honor to have that kind of support, I think, here in town. And it's one of the take a moment to thank everybody for that one thing, especially the residents and voters here in Kent. Okay, moving on to agenda items. I do have a couple of amendments. First off, I'd like to move an old business, the transfer station fee structure. Jennifer Eaton Jones here today in person, which we do appreciate that, move her up right after approval of minutes. Actually, to be public comment, I will move right after number six of the public comment, we'll put her up to that. Right after that before we get into everything else. And appreciate her coming here in person. Under number ten, two, credit cards department, we're not quite ready to move ahead. I think the extended time I had to treasure doing other things the past two weeks, we haven't finalized that, so we're gonna take that off the agenda. And and also add at number, at the, before January thirteenth, the last one would be executive session to discuss social services directors time off. That will be discussing for executive session and deal with that and right after public comment. Anybody have anything else you'd like to add to this? Okay. Motion to approve your amendment agenda. Second, okay, all in favor?
Bye.
Great, okay, great. All right, number four, look for approval of the minutes on the April eighteenth, April twenty fourth, and May seventh, special board of selectmen meetings. Just looking to see.
I have a couple of changes on April eighteenth. Under next steps, I think the word priorities, there might be a typo. And years needs a apostrophe, yes. And the other thing I, I don't know if we can change this or not, but in the May seventh one, we had talked in my meeting about renaming the save as you throw plan from twenty five, twenty six to twenty four, twenty five. Um, because it would confuse people, but it got in, the motion got in as twenty five, twenty six. So, and somebody actually said to me yesterday, this isn't going to go into into effect for a couple of years. I'm like, no. Can we amend that? Yeah.
Make the amendment, should we only amend the motion even here, right, to reopen the motion?
amend the wording in the minutes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, same, and then approval right then.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, any, anything else? Good, good catch. All right, then I'll accept an amendment for, excuse me, motion to approve the minutes as amended, the April eighteenth and the seventh. Thank you, that's second, great, thank you. I had no specific correspondence directed to the board in writing anyway. It's always much difficult to say it right now. And so we'll go to public comment on the agenda items. Any public comment? Many more public? Okay, hearing that, I would like to move to presentation from Jennifer Eaton Jones and our transfer station coordinator, all around good guy Rick Gosbord, and people like you, the person who puts it all together.
I'm prepared to offer a suggestion. I will share my screen if that's all that is.
So I should do, this has been ongoing since we approved the overall program. The specifics came back to us to do and a lot of different back and forths and we talked with vendors and so on. And I think we finally got together after three o'clock. Jennifer, why don't you go ahead?
I think I do, I would like to know for the rest of that staff, Joyce and Rick have been incredible working with me and we've been nonstop. So there's a lot of thought that has gone in for the public to know. So what we came to, and feel free to jump in and interrupt me at any point. We came to the suggestion of offering the permit fee at fifty dollars for all users. So everyone uses the same space rate to access the transfer station. And I think in most transfer stations, the permit is really about access. There's a permit that provides you access. This also provides the opportunity for residents who don't use the transfer station for trash disposal to opt, to use it for other items like bulkie. The other programs that are offered at the transfer station, propane tanks, tires, et cetera, they have access. And they're not paying that higher hundred and fifty dollar annual fee. Have access to be able to dispose of other items they cannot dispose of at the purr. So they get their.
We currently don't take propane or tire disposal.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification. In the future, they will be part of the spring. They'll be part of the next state responsibility law that I can, back next year and the following year. On, in those orders of tire, of cylinders and tires. Um, so then, so what we did was if you look in the row and the column, we'll start with Y three, and I've highlighted it here, all of the transfer station permits are the same fee. And then in the next column, what we have is what it would be for the options of the residents or the users to choose how much they want to spend on disposal by choosing the number of bags they would purchase. The first three rows are the typical kitchen bag at thirteen gallons, and they would have the option of choosing two rolls or twenty six bags, a box of fifty two bags, which is one bag a week, or an option of choosing two bags a week. What we also did was we, hoping we created an incentive. When you purchase, if you choose, which is the typical household, two bags a week, you actually would get a twenty six dollar discount for buying all of your bags at the time of your permit, rather than waiting and buying a little now and a little later. It's, it's a twenty six dollar discount. We also heard the public in their concern that the thirteen gallon bags were not big enough. Some households use a thirty two gallon or a fifty five gallon when they're doing a cleanup. So we actually added that option for the residents to purchase bags at thirty two gallon and fifty five gallon. And we had to estimate what the projected revenues would be and the cost based on previous year's permit users and seniors versus regular households. This is an approximate uh, number of users who would use the different size program. So I'm actually, so this is the fee structure, we would get a revenue, approximate revenue of seventy five or seventy six thousand dollars. I'm going to scroll down a little bit so you can see. So the top part was the revenue based on users. And the yellow section is the cost of the town. And there is a cost to the town to purchase the various sizes. And the number of bags and the cases are based on the users above by previous year. In addition, we will continue the organics program and provide the bio bags for the residents to purchase compostable bags as well as the transportation and disposal to send the organics to be processed in New York Firth. And so that's what you have here is the total cost for the bags, the cost for the bio bags, and this is the cost for the organics T and D. I highlighted it because we are also planning for the future for that cost to go away for the town as the H R A looks to apply for another grant to provide in vessel processing at the transfer station. Then what we have in these following three rows is the projection on, based on now that it's, I hate to use the word mandate or required or or ask, the new system, we can call it. We know that other municipalities, it's proven, have a waste reduction thirty five to forty five percent, that's the average. Some are higher, some are a little lower. Um, but I, to be conservative, do have a number at twenty five percent reduction. They set the new rate as of July first for Tippity, which is a hundred and one dollars and six cents. Looking at the previous year's tonnage and twenty five percent reduction, we reduce the cost to, for municipal solid waste, thirty thousand of all ways, twenty two thousand based on twenty five, thirty five, or forty five percent reduction. And what we did was we looked at previous year revenue and in the full fiscal year of twenty two, twenty three. And what we received for revenue were just the permits. We didn't look at the revenue for bulky or metal or fee waste or any of that, just what were the two variables that we were considering were variables of the income coming in on permits and the variable of the reduction of M S W coming out and that cost of disposal. The pull rate, and the pull is the number of times the material is taken from the transfer station at intent taken to our major transfer station in Danbury, that stays the same. No matter how much weight is in that container, you're going to have the same number of pulls and the same cost. So we're only looking at the two variables of disposal of M S W. And based on that, we have this comparison from the previous full fiscal year of twenty two, twenty three to this fiscal year. And yes, there is a gap between previous fiscal year and this fiscal year. But the good news is that with the bridge funding and the continued current grant, we're actually going to be above what you were in pre-pilot. And then getting us through this second year or the first year of permanency, we will have an additional grant to put you into a onsite processing and will be able to lift that gap or lower the gap, I should say, between your revenue and expenses. What this, this year will provide to us is a full year of data of now everyone's participating, how much waste production we have, what are our true costs? And then we can revisit these costs or these fees next year and say, we might need to adjust. Maybe we can even lower the fees based on if residents really reduce their waste, we could even reduce it further. If they don't reduce it or we get to a certain level, we may consider saying, okay, we're gonna keep the fees the same or maybe we need to bump it by twenty five cents, you know, per bag or something. That's something you can look at for next year, but it gives the residents an incentive to say, you know, if I really participate and I do well, I can even reduce and save more money than I am this year. We know that a typical small family that does produce only one bag or generate one bag a week in the pre-pilot years, they were paying a hundred and thirty dollars years, thirty dollars a year to use the transfer station. In this model, they would be paying a hundred and fifteen dollars if they stayed to one bag. There are some families who maybe do one bag every other week, with twenty six bags a year. They're even willing to reduce it even further. So it really is a benefit for the folks who are really not generating that much waste and not subsidizing others. For the other households that average a little higher, they're gonna hover between that hundred and fifty and perhaps a hundred and eighty dollars a year. This is in the gray area. But what it does come out to in the screen section is what would it cost you a week? Based on the number of bags you're using. So if you're disposing of one bag a week, it's gonna cost you about a dollar and quarter a week to dispose of your trash at the transfer station. If you're disposing of two bags a week, it's going to cost you two and a half dollars a week. So it kind of gives you a better sense of like, what am I actually paying every time I go based on the bags? The cost of the bags that we built in with your permit options includes the cost of disposal um, in, in the, the purchase. And that's important for the residents to understand that the bags are higher than what you would buy at the grocery store or at Costco because it's not, you're not just buying a bag, you're buying your disposal. So that's important for you to understand. So this is the model, we have determined a fifty dollar per user fee. And then these are the correlated fees based on the number of bags they would request. Thirty two and a half dollars for twenty six bags, sixty five dollars for fifty two thirteen gallon bags, a hundred and four dollars with that discount. Um, it would, would have been a hundred and thirty dollars to purchase them all at once. And then your fifty two bags of thirty two gallon, which is essentially two and a half regular kitchen bags. So it correlates the, the cost. I'm happy to take questions. We also have drafted for your review the application process that does have the choices listed where the user would choose their transfer station permit for all residents, the option to choose just an organics only permit. Um, they, it provides them access to the transfer station for organics only. And then we also want to let the public know that if they do have orange bags left over from the pilot, they are accepted during this first year. Um, so we, we don't want to waste them, we want to give others opportunity that if they had been frugal last year and reduce their waste load, they, they're gonna actually benefit going into the permanent year. Uh, so the, the residents will choose their number of bags that they would like. They also have the option of purchasing, purchasing a food scrap collection kit, which is the six gallon carry container, a one and a half gallon kitchen bin, collection bin, and two rolls of bio bags. I'm sorry, yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was sharing. That's strange. My apologies. Let's see if I can get this to share. Let me see if I can, I share and then reshare. This whole time I thought you were seeing what I was seeing.
Just for information that the logo kept out, isn't going to be on any bags, correct?
I'm sorry?
Might not look as good as that, but.
Right, but yeah, no.
I thought it was, I thought that's for one.
Yes, the logo, the logo will be on the bags for, um, the transfer station operators to be able to identify that they're not orange bags they bought from you line, but in fact, they're bags that were purchased from the town. So I apologize here, I hope, please show you what I was reviewing, which is they'll choose their permit type, they'll choose their number of bags, they'll choose if they'd like a collection kit, and they also have the option of choosing if they would like additional bags. Um, this number, actually, it's a good thing, see, Joyce was smart and told me to bring my computer, so if we had a change, we, we made a modification today that the rolls would be a roll of ten instead of a roll of twenty to be a little bit more reasonable on buying it all at once for the fifty five gallon bag option. So these are their options that they would choose. And then the second part of the application is them just filling out their information. I'm happy to take questions, Rick, I'll also help answer questions, and we'll go from there.
So I just want to make sure I understand the fifty dollar thing. So if, if I don't have norm, if I'm coming to the transfer station, regardless of what I'm doing, I now need a fifty dollar permit? Even if I'm just doing bulky waste or something else?
That is what we are suggesting. So in the past, if you had bulky waste, did you have to have a permit?
Single use times, we didn't require a permit. They were single use, but it's still go without a permit, but.
Just want to make sure you understood.
Bring it in a truck called every weekend.
It is a typical method of, um, towns who provide, it's a service. So the community, it's important for every community, not just Kent, to know that transfer stations are a service that the town is providing to the entire community. And all residents should have the ability to access it, but at the same time, it's not free. It's costing all the taxpayers to run it. So most municipalities, almost every municipality in, in our region requires you to provide it. I have a permit. Some permits are nothing, some permits are ten dollars, some permits are a hundred dollars. And, and very, it varies. So it's something for you to consider if that's something that we can strike from, we can strike that. But that was the suggestion.
Yeah, I think it makes sense, really good.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's equipment fees and maintenance and so on of the, the silly stuff that's all part of this, right? So and, and just, you know, again, to just do the comparison that we were doing to curbside, we're still hundreds of dollars, like two to three hundred dollars cheaper than the full freight that I need right now. We have a deal, but, um, yeah, but it is something that could be more attractive, though, and I like the idea that it's, you know, if you're gonna be a part of it, you have to be part of it. You're not gonna change your bag colors, you're not gonna do anything else that has to be bought in fully in, in first. And with the pilot agreement that we're having in this year, with the grants and so on, this will help bring people in, I think, helps a little bit, and then we'll see, you know, as you said, see you next year as well. But, um, yeah, so, so, and I know there's a lot of work that went into it, and I do appreciate all you, all your three of you specifically for. So.
I'm okay, I'm sure.
Oh, a question, sorry, Dan?
Is there any period of time less than fifty two weeks? Because, for example, I'm usually away for three months. So if I pay fee for fifty two bags, you know, probably won't use them.
The first line where it says, choose the number of bags, it's for twenty six?
The other question I have is, will there be sample bags so you can see if they fit what you have at home that you need to put it in?
So all residents who had a transfer station permit last year had received the bags, the orange bags. Um, they are regular kitchen sized bags. And you could talk to Rick about looking at the size. Uh, they, there are rolls available, it's just a roll, a roll of thirteen gallon um, that you could choose on the permit. So if you scroll down and you only wanted a roll, which is thirteen bags, it's basically half, half of the thirty two. I think one of the discussions that it's important for folks to know is we were trying to make it less burdensome on the transfer station operators to provide larger amounts to the residents so that they weren't coming every week and the transfer station didn't become a retail operation of selling bags. But at the same time, we wanted residents to have the opportunity to buy an extra roll um, of, of bags. So we're hoping with those incentives to buy it with your permit, it'll be less, um, I'll just take one roll at a time. But there are, there are residents who either travel or they're here part time, and that's why we chose that smaller um, option of twenty six bags. And it's, we just basically added the weeks in to try to have a visual of what do I actually generate every week? I mean, typically, that's how people think when it comes to trash.
Also, just something to mention, we're working on a point of sale system for not having to change cash.
My gosh.
So we actually, you know, we're actually getting to twentieth century, huh? But, it's fine. Um, but we are, and we'll get to that actually, in conjunction with our, their systems. They, we have a program that has capability, we believe, to go in and get my salaries, working out some details costs and so much of that, but that should help, again, help keep a lot of our, our guys with the transfer station dealing with equals and times and dollars, knows whether they could, people could swipe, pick up bags, say you had two there or to get anything capable of waste and things like that.
Good work.
Yes, I can.
Really good work.
You worked hard.
Are we still thinking we're gonna be on target to start July one?
With the, then tomorrow morning, to finalize all the deals, he was on set. Bags and all that stuff, and figuring out what kind of large scale bags and how hefty and what mill rate, you know, mill bag and all sizes and all that stuff. Not really burdensome, but that's what works. For the, for the waste.
So Jen, I had offered to, like, sit at the farmer's market or something, actually, Glenn and I hoped that, just hand out information about it. I don't know if people want to sell permits and distribute bags, but would you be helping us with some, like, educational information to be able to explain?
Yeah, so H R A will be updating our landing page that's dedicated for the town. I will provide staff as well to help you whenever we tend to also, you know, support you at the farmer's market. And beforehand, happy to meet with you, go over the program so you feel like you can be well versed in, in the program. And then, yes, we'll give you everything from Q R codes where folks can scan it or just pieces of paper. Take part in whatever we can do to provide outreach, we will provide it to the town. And it will be, we will be providing it on our, on your behalf.
And I do think there's gonna be people with questions because I've already fielded a lot of questions.
We'll only give you questions.
Your questions are good.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, it's just they, it's changed, so they want to know, what does it mean?
The draft application is in a shared folder, so you can look at it more closely if you.
Yeah, actually, it already was nice to share for me, so.
Um, we just, we did already approve the overall, but I'm just gonna ask for
endorsement?
Endorsement, yeah, so what we've reapproved, but the endorsement of the work in, in the, in the, the program level for the permit.
I will make the motion to endorse it as presented.
Second, then. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Okay, tax refund is our next item. We have three tax refunds. It's, we, we have a, one for a tell, a folder for a hundred twenty eight, sixty nine. Ally Financial, Charlotte, it's two eleven thirty one cents. And toward least is four hundred eighty gallons and sixty seven cents for a total refund of eight twenty eight, sixty seven cents. I have a motion to approve the tax refund. Okay, next is the treasury report.
Um, I, can you hear me?
Very well.
Okay, I don't have a written report. I ran out of time this month because I was very busy doing other things. But I will give you just a few updates. The approved budget document is ready to be posted on the website. So when the town clerk gets an opportunity, the new approved budget will go up on the website. I have been busy filing required reports. One was the ARPA annual reporting that had to be filed with the federal government. And as part of that report, I also issued an ARPA funds status report, which I had sent all of you earlier in the month. I collaborated this month with bond counsel and wrote and provided motions to the board of finance, the board of selectmen, and the town meeting to modify the streetscape funding resolution, and that's all squared away, so that's good. There's a little more wrap up items that I have to do on the budget as far as entering the budget into the state portal and then certifying the municipal spending cap, which is a two step process, so I'll be doing that this week as well. I did reach out, well, actually, the cemetery commission or board or whatever their name is, reached out to me and I had a meeting with Lori Schlesel. And just today, I had a meeting with Tammy Potter, and there is a little bit of residual funding that Tammy Potter does have that she will be turning over to me to pay expenditures that are being incurred now for the rest of this fiscal year, so that the salary for the sexton will be able to be paid as well as, I think it was a small mapping project, and there's a as well as, I think it was a small mapping project, and there's an invoice out for that, and that will also get paid with funding that is still yet to come from the Cemetery Association.
Did you get your answer that you asked about the payment of the sexton? She had posed whether it was an hourly or a salary.
I believe I was told it was a salary position.
Yeah, that's what I understood.
Yeah, that was a big one, because I could, we didn't, not really taken consideration moving uh, the association, it finished on March thirty-first with their fiscal year into our April one. Uh, and how are we gonna pay expenses uh, when everything we shifted over into the non-expended, non-expiring accounts? And that was the thing that uh, we were talking about the other day, and then we went with time, and it was some residual funds. And now we sent specifically to pay or expenses occurred up to the end of fiscal year, so thirty, so. That's how we'll, we'll come to Barbara, so she'll be able to use it that way, instead of having it go automatically into the non-expiring account for next year's.
Yep. So other than those few little updates, I don't have anything else unless someone has a question for me.
I have a question, I'm sorry, but um, I was bringing up, I was bringing up to Park and Rec about the need to start the process of expending the forty thousand dollars for Kent Common Drainage. You, you did tell me that it needed to be spent before December twenty twenty-four, right?
It needs to be obligated, and by that, you either have to physically have the dollars out the door, you have to have a con, signed contract in place with a contractor to spend those funds.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, thank you, Barbara, appreciate again all your help, and all the work you did, budget, you certainly were. We kept you busy towards the end there, I think, but appreciate it. Um, okay, uh, our next is a new business, and we have the Town of Kent Resolution Establishing America Two-Fifty Kent CT Committee. Um, it said on here, create a committee, but we already have the resolution that created committees. But in going through to actually solidify people's participation, um, we have most people have, um, haven't gotten back to me. Um, and we are looking to have a meeting in the first week of, both week of June, because of the remiss I have uh, in actually helping putting together the committee and getting it working, but we do have great, uh, other people here. We, Michelle Mott, right now, is, is on for the school, that night change, Samantha has the flu, um, Phil Fox from the Chamber of Commerce. The three members that I've reached out to, they agreed to work, um, of course, is Matt Bussi, that I have. Uh, Sarah Chase and Steve Klotz from South Kent School, which I'm trying to think, South Kent, and that's what people about. At some point, and this is the overall committee, there's, there will be some committees, so, and we'll be about, well, Charlie Brink, the town clerk, Martin Schmidt. Right now, taking the lead for the Historical Society, and there may be another one that uh, will be in, uh, they're working on their new executive director, I think. Sarah Marshall also said she would participate, and possibly one other one from the Kent Memorial Library, Eric Sloan Museum, uh, museum, partially, uh, working through their organization, but the, their um, executive director of the Sloan Museum's email is not accepting my email, so we're gonna call him. Yeah, if you haven't got back to me, um, so we're working on that. I have written notes about the representatives of the Scotty Coke Indian Tribe and Trimal Nation. I have not received any information back from them yet, um, but I did, uh, which is really a real positive thing. It says, uh, Alastair will be a student, a youth leader recommended by the executive director of the old State House. That was uh, an add-on that was not supposed to be up for the town, it was the, I think, the state level. But, but I did reach out to uh, to Ian Strieber at high school, and uh, Jen Duncan at our, our town rep up to the, the youth target, said, how about we get a student involved? And so, um, he called me right away, we talked for a minute, uh, Ian took some information down. Uh, so I got back the next day, got back for me the next day, and had a, an A medal, uh, Marshall. Marshall, M O E R S C H E L L, who was a rising, you know.
Yeah, she's a freshman, she's great.
Right, a rising sophomore.
Like a freshman, yeah, for three years.
Right, a rising, right, I put it as a rising sophomore, I kind of gave her a little, but uh, she's excited, and so, you know, so, um, yeah. And I said that, as necessary, we build this, there's internships and pressure projects she could do as part of her um, education process at high school, I'd be happy to help with that as well, and so, there, so. Um, our next move, I said, is to actually uh, meet on the first week in uh, in June, and then by the end of June, have a more we're supposed to have had it by January, again, um, we'll have a more forward uh, plan, you know, how we're gonna, like, probably sexualize um, these six-month periods up as we get forward, and do some activities with each, with the library, with the Eric Sloan, with with the town itself and other activities in Chamber of Commerce and so on, to actually celebrate that. And eventually, um, you know, in my mind, anyway, a, a big celebration of, of, it's the participation in the July, you know, uh, July, one seventy-one thirty-six and the two hundred and fifty years, so, let's some kind of a festival around the time, and it looks like other towns as well, will be doing the same thing, so. But uh, there's a lot of stuff that, I think in the past, the town has done, so, you know, that's kind of things I'm looking at, what we've done. We used to have, you know, a harvest festival and things like that, we could have a, you know, recreation of, you know, some of the early settlers, uh, Thanksgiving dinners or something like that. Um, that's kind of stuff that I think we're gonna throw out and really see what we can do, and regenerate some stuff. The town is great, thanks, but there's, I think we do miss some opportunities, we've started a big, the Burns Day, but it's a phenomenal time of February, don't we? You done it, really? Anyway, January, and then we went to the, you know, St. Patrick's Day celebration again. And so, yeah, there's a lot of things we could do.
So Marty, I was really interested in this, and I realize this is your baby, because you're listed on there, but am, am I allowed to? I mean, I know the public is invited to these kind of meetings, but um, is there any room for me or no? Because then it becomes a.
Uh, well, we have to, yeah, let's look at that. But it, um.
I mean, I could certainly attend as a member.
I thought the same thing, as a, as a history teacher, I would love to be involved.
Yeah.
Well, I haven't resolved that, and it's, and again, that is a point that we'd like to segment this off. I'm gonna actually appoint someone besides myself, chair, and then have some committees, so like that, and certainly those are the things that I would look at, you guys getting involved. So we did, so, yeah, because that would, again, not have to be a completely happier pro-work process. Um, and really look at these quarterly meetings of the Osterium Committee, some people may want to get involved because of the project, you know, it could be the library doing a certain series of things. Of course, which you do anyway, but we'll, you know, but bring those in, but um, you know, just larger things, and then be more specific, uh, stuff that you guys could get involved in. Yeah, absolutely. You can't just be a poet person, you're select. You're, you're, but, but no, certainly, yes, yeah, absolutely. I see this as, as uh, you know, all the stuff that we can do, I've been looking online, uh, did get a note from the, um, one of the people on the state staff, just this uh, this week, saying, um, you've probably been busy with, which is, you haven't done a lot with it, but most towns are lagging, but um, let us know what they, you've got some grants and other things, uh, opportunities, so, yeah, so this, so things, so there's great things that you could do with this stuff.
I went to, I went to a program first February or March, but it was in the Milford Library, and it was like a collaboration of their committee with the DAR out of Sherman. And they had this woman, um, acting out as, as Deborah Sampson, and I had read a book about her. The, the, like, the very first female member of the military.
Right.
Um, and it, she, it was a really good program.
Yeah.
So we need to be able to do some of that kind of.
I think that's, that's the kind of great things we do, and again, you know, bringing in the the great organization of the prep schools, as well as high school and, and community organizations to do those things. Get more young kids involved still as well, and a great, glad Meadows is involved in this, this is great, it'd be great to have that as well, so. So anyway, so I wanted to report that, let you know, we're, we're, um, so, um, yeah, and we'll, uh, certainly let you know more as we, we get going. Shortly by in June, we'll have, uh, probably some kind of report back to you all, and I'm just exactly where we're going. Okay, um.
We don't need a charge, right?
No, we have a charge, residents are already there, so, and it's, yeah, if, if you want to look at that, I have.
No.
If we have, yeah, there's. Um, uh, next is a, uh, the write-up and small balances, this is. Yeah, this is something that uh, is done every, every year, and I'll read the letter from, uh, from our, that we give our tax collectors. Uh, it's May fourteen, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me, according to the town of Kent, code of ordinances, chapter eighteen, section eighteen, dash eight, dated one, two thousand nine. The tax collectors authorized to retain overpayments of taxes if such credit balances are less than five dollars. The twelve accounts on the attached list dated five fourteen, twenty twenty-four have balances from one cent to five dollars, totaling uh, eleven dollars and thirty-two cents. I requested the board of selection approve adjusting all these credit balances to zero, and the eleven dollars and thirty-two cents we transferred to tax refunds line one thirty, dash three twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Make that motion, yeah. Do you want me to read all that, the?
I'll look then.
Okay, sorry that I, okay, all right, so, um, we're, I'll load it, I'll get the reading of the X, balance. This motion. Second, 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 okay, all right.
Thanks.
Okay, all right, all right, now, so the, um, transfer of the, uh, balance of eleven dollars and thirty-two cents to the tax refunds line one thirty, dash three twenty. Discussion, all table?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
You want to decide this week? No, I won't. Catch this.
We have a bad habit of doing this.
I know, I'm so excited when you get done. Um, okay, now we're next on our list.
We need a library.
Yes, um, we're really, uh, during our, I think during our budget season, so, and we were eager to hear, uh, following things that were going on with library and Sarah Michelle, that was a great time to actually bring her in, uh, and Sandy Edelman, Edelman, the chairman of board, hi Sandra, good to see you again. And, uh, other folks from the board, I think, um, so, turn it right over to you and let you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you to the board of selection. Uh, I'm Sarah Marshall, the library director. On the Zoom is Sandy Edelman, who's our board president. Uh, sitting next to me here is Sam Callaway, who's the head of our building committee. We have another board member, I'm fine, thank you. We have another board member here, Chuck Goldberg, and we are here to give you the good news that, um, we are, uh, very proud to say we will be expanding in the next few years. The, um, plans and the project has been in the works since I started as director, so, six years ago. And, uh, we're getting very, very close to, um, big, 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 big motion, right? We've had all the, we've done the, um, the background work with the town, we've done focus groups, we've talked about what people want and what people would like to see. Um, and we are, we're, we're ready for the next steps. Um, some of the, I'll share my screen and show you the image that's, um, exciting. Okay, there, now, okay. There it is. Uh, that is a photo, a photorealistic, uh, rendering of the expansion project that we'll be doing. Um, and what this will do for us is it will give us a variety of improvements that we've been needing for a very long time. As a matter of fact, when you look back in the, in the history of the library, they've always talked about needing these things, and we are now right, right on the cusp of, of achieving that. So, um, in particular, there will be a program room that seats somewhere between seventy and eighty people, but that will be completely flexible, that you can put the chairs away and just fill it up with, you know, tables and other types of things, so it will be useful for all the different types of programs that a library can do. Um, in, including, uh, speakers, including, uh, films, you know, to be able to show films during the day. Right now, we don't have that capability, we'll be able to do that, and, and imagine how many people in town will really be able to take advantage of that. Um, really, it's, it's, it's going to be incredibly flexible and, and useful to us. There's a small kitchen upstairs, too, which will help us with all the, um, parties that we have, sort of a constant flow of food and drink out of the library. Uh, the other additions to the building will be two, uh, small meeting rooms that will fit sort of six to eight people, that will be fully wired, people can hold meetings there, they could get, um, they could actually get some quiet work done. We don't have any quiet spaces in the library at all, so this would be a place where somebody could shut a door and get something done. We'll have improved flow for the work, um, for the staff that work there, and they'll be able to collaborate better and more efficiently. Um, certain things will stay the same, the children's room will stay the same. Um, the reading room, the, the main old library from nineteen twenty-two will be exactly the same, that will be utterly untouched. Pretty much every other piece of the, of the, of the property will change. Um, in the connector piece, so I'll let Sam talk about that in a minute. Um, but, uh, that is part of improving the access to all of our facilities. We'll have a, um, two ADA bathrooms and an elevator, I'll, I'll let Sam talk a little bit more about that, but, um, access is very important to us. And we are, I think, uh, textbook-wise, we are actually accessible, but there could be a lot of improvements. And these changes will do that. Um, Sam, you want to speak to a little more about the building process?
Yeah, I think, um, a couple of things I'd like to mention, though. It's, I think, important to emphasize that the, this building will be, when it's complete, about as energy-efficient a building as you can possibly imagine, and that's without solar collectors, which we hope we can add. But we've, we weren't sure we had enough money in the budget for them, so we're treating those as an add-on. Looks, looks to us now like we may be able to go there, and that will get us very close to being able to net zero this building. Uh, I think that's important. The, uh, um. Another thing we've worked hard to do is maintain as much of the outdoor space as we can, so that the book sale can continue to function. Um, Sarah alluded to this, but this building will be, when it's complete, completely ADA compliant and handicap accessible. Um, I don't know, people, many people don't know, but the, the library is built on several, several different floor levels now. And they create all sorts of ADA problems, and this project will level them all out into one, one four level, which will be accessible, uh, for the sale.
Permission to clock.
But.
The clock.
The clock, the clock tower.
Yes.
The clock tower is actually the elevator tower, and, uh, the clock is, is the architect's um, solution to making it more than just a big sort of blank wall. Um, it'll be just the clock on that one face, it won't be on all four sides. And we hope, I, we gather that's been some people that have asked questions about this. We hope to be able to backlight with very dim, uh, twenty-seven hundred kiln, warm white LED lights, the hands and the numbers, so that night, there will be just a glow, you can breathe it, the time, but there wouldn't be any uh, stillage of, of light onto buildings or the ground or anything. Um, I was also asked to, uh, to, uh, comment on construction. It's a little hard to predict that now, because until we know exactly when the campaign is complete. Um, and until we know we have all the land use approvals we've applied for, and we're two-thirds of the way there. Um, we can't really predict it, but here's, here's what I think it looks like now. Um, assuming those two things happen in the relatively near future, I think we could get all of the drawings and contractor selection work done uh, in, in order to, in time to start construction in March next year, maybe April, somewhere around there. That would be our goal, anyway. Um, it's probably in a, in a, uh, normal situation, it's probably a twelve-month construction project. Um, we don't know how to factor in the administrative um, delays, let's say, that might occur because of the grant we've received. We're, we're very grateful for that, but it also is a administratively cumbersome process, so we don't know how to quite um, deal with that, and have added in our minds three months on to the whole length of the project. So let's say fifteen months, which would have us opening up sometime in the late summer or fall of two thousand twenty-six. And, um, that's, is that, is that covered all that, Sarah?
Uh, well, we were gonna talk a little bit about the, uh, Kent School has, um, been very generous with us to, um, we have right now a, a, an agreement for some part, shared parking in their engineering parking lot, which is fairly close to the library, and uh, we, we're still working out the terms, but they were very gracious and encouraging. And the other lovely, um, collaboration at this point is with Kent Congregational Church, First Church. Um, to be, to use their parish house as a relocation spot, so we will, it will take some time to transfer what we have at the library over, over there, but the hope is we will not be closed for very long, and we will open up over there and be able to provide not the entire breadth of our collection, but certainly library services and as much of the collection as we can schlep over there. Um, and, and including lots of programming, especially the really popular programs for children. Those will all be going on as seamlessly as we can, as we can do that, so.
Yeah, we're, we're working on an engineering study right now to make sure that the, uh, the load-bearing capacity of that big. Yeah, we're, we're working on an engineering study right now to make sure that the, uh, the load bearing capacity of that big open hall is sufficient to support the books. We think it is.
Yeah, books are heavy. Uh, Sandy, do you want to talk about the, um, the financing part? Sandy? Maybe you're unmuted. We can't hear you. Nope. I'm gonna stop sharing, and maybe that will make a difference. Sandy, try again? Nope. We can't hear you. We can't hear you, sorry. Okay, so. She may try to log back in, so if she does, we'll see if that works. But just so we don't lose too much time, uh, where the finances go are, we, as I said, or Sam mentioned, we did apply for a two million dollar grant from the state of Connecticut and received it. We are waiting to get on the bond commission agenda. And there are, um, lots of stipulations that, that we have to have in place before they'll even hear it. And, and they can also cancel that meeting willy-nilly. So the hope is that we will hit, we'll get, um, all our ducks in a row in time to be on their June, I think it's the twenty-fifth or so agenda. Uh, Maria Horn is on that commission, and she's a big supporter of, of this project, so, and I think she's a, she's not the chair of that commission, she's up there. And so my, my hope is that she'll be able to use her influence to at least get that meeting to happen. Maybe that's Sandy, uh, to get that meeting to happen, and then we will, um, proceed with the next steps. We can't hear you, Sandy.
You're still me, someone you're muted.
Yeah, your phone says it's muted. Hey, hey.
Yes, did that work?
Yes, I told them about the grant and that we're waiting for the bond commission. Part.
Okay, so that's really the issue, um, that, you know, we think this is about a total six point three million dollar project. We are fortunate that the state has given us two million dollars of a, a, a construction grant. But after having been awarded it at the end of November, that it still has to be ratified by the state bond commission. And there's a requirement of how much cash in hand you have before they will send your awarded grant to the state bond commission. And until the, we can do that, um, then, uh, the state bond commission can't act on it and kind of ratify the grant. And until they ratify the grant, we don't have, you know, we, they can't even start dispersing money. So we are working to, a lot of the money that we got donated to us is in five-year pledges. We actually do have a fair amount of money in hand. We're working with you, Savings Bank, to maybe get a line of credit that will, we may never need, but will satisfy the state in terms of saying we have enough cash on hand for you to put this on the state bond commission agenda. So it's, it's a little complicated, you know, they, as I've said frequently at various meetings, the two million dollar grant is lovely, but they don't send a two million dollar check in the mail to Sarah's house. Um, and there are a lot of requirements to, to get it. So, um, in terms of, you know, so how, how do we get, you know, even a small new connector, but we're also renovating a lot of the building? Um, and we're about to start a real public campaign to get a lot of the town involved. A lot of the money that we have raised in addition to the state grant has been through, you know, one-on-one and small group meetings. And we've had some very generous people in town, but now we want everybody in the town to see the new beautiful design, to support it. Uh, we're gonna have, like, we're gonna sell, uh, paver bricks where you can put your own name on it, you can, we're gonna put our grandchildren's name on, on one or two. And so everybody, when the new library is open, uh, can see their name or a loved one or somebody they want to honor or commemorate, um, and feel like it's their town library. So a lot of the reason why we're asking to present this to you today is, is a courtesy to the Board of Selectmen informational. And because we're about to go out to the public, to really involve the public in the last few hundred thousand dollars we need to raise. Um, I did want to clarify, because this might have been a question a few years ago. You know, some libraries have needed towns to bond money to get to where we are, and we do not anticipate that. So if you get questioned, uh, by people in the town, or it comes up at a town meeting or a board of finance, uh, we are, have no expectation at this point of needing a town bond that would need a public referendum with implications on people's taxes to support. So I wanted to take that off the table for now, and, um, uh, and also, yes, I think to the extent many people in town still don't know, as much as we try to tell them, that we are not a municipal department. We do get a very, you know, very lovely town grant. But if people say, you know, why are we building this fancy town library, is this going to increase our taxes? The answer is, it shouldn't. It's not, it's not a town bond, it's not a town referendum, it's not being built by the town, it's being built by the Kent Library Association with a significant state grant.
You have questions for us?
No, I just, uh, Sandy, I, I thank you for, for bringing that up, because that is, you know, always a question. Um, the Kent Memorial Library is definitely is a town library, there are certain definitions that we have in, in the state and, and, uh, when we were going through all that and standing it. But we do it by a grant to you, we don't actually have it as a public library. So that does mean that, uh, as you go through the, the process, you brought this up excellently, um, that, uh, all the planning and zoning and, and, uh, and, uh, the building code folks, all this have had their say. Um, I asked for this, uh, you know, and, and talk to them and let them know that we need the informational, you know, background of what's happening with the library right now. We need to know, personally, I'm not gonna be here, Sarah, I would love to go in here, see, as a, as a citizen of Kent as well, unfortunately, but I did want to see the updates and, you know, heard it before, I'm following it. But it's important, again, to, uh, to understand that, you know, while we want to have this, uh, you, you have to go through your processes to do it. And, and we as the board are not going to interfere with the planning, so we're not planning on doing that. Um, that's something else we need, you know, some people have wondered, now, are we gonna get in the middle of it all and pass up orders tonight that we have to do this? No, we can't do that. Uh, your, your private organization, you know, private organization that you can support it like many other organizations do. So anyway, um, I don't blame you at that point, but I, I personally, I, I do wish you well, and I, and I hope that, you know, that, that plans, uh, meet all codes and everything else. That we can have this great, uh, addition to our town. Um, I'm a, sure, the collective area, yeah, but it, it, you know, we'll have to see how that goes by then.
I would say it's been, you know.
I know, it's been quite a long event.
Oh, we'll forget that, we'll teach all the kids how to tell time, that'd be good. Uh, one of the nice things about going through the process through the town commissions has been, you know, we've had questions, we've had people who've had concerns. But the unilateral, other than the minor concerns people have had, has been, this is great. So that's been lovely to feel the support, both from the donors, who've been very generous, incredibly generous. But from the other townspeople who are just us, you know, we all live here, and there are townspeople in those commissions, and we feel their support. Um, that even though they may have some issues about following regulations, which is fine. Um, that they are all seem to be very supportive of the project and excited and enthusiastic and feeling like it's gonna push Kent a little further forward. And that's good for all of us.
So I'm sure you know, we were approved by the Architectural Review Board and the Zoning Board of Appeals. So on the thirteenth of June, we'll go before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Hopefully, uh, fingers crossed, to receive the third of the three approvals we need. And if we are fortunate to, uh, to receive that, that will trigger an ability to move forward with our, our drawings and into that schedule that I talked about.
Any questions anybody has or anything else regarding our lives meditation?
Thank you for all your work on it, I'm sure very exciting.
It's very exciting.
Anything of that nature and, and that enormity, when you talk about the, the funding and then the, just the involvement of, of your board and all this, of the people at Kent to do this, um, it's, it's great. And, you know, it just will be helped to kind of, it does, so wish you luck, and, um, yeah, sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
We can hear more about it. Yes.
Let's not be sidetracked.
Thank you very much, ladies.
For the time.
Thank you, appreciate the time.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, um, uh, Steve Grant discussion, that time coming up on that time of year, um, I know Barbara still I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but I know she's still relooking at all that amounts, legislature's been busy, uh, figuring out whether I gotta go, you know, add levels of increasing Steve grants we're gonna get and so on. Um, but we do need to, to talk as a board, but we're gonna go, we talked about that early in, in the budget process as well, that we're gonna do that. Um, we do have some ideas, um, I'm really, um, Joyce, you talked a little bit about that, so she kind of coordinated some of our, our building programs and so on. Um, so, I mean, we're really good.
Uh, so. Obviously, we need to be able to present a narrative with, uh, actual plans and projects that we want to move forward with. Uh, I started with the community house, I went through and easily able to come up with a, a five hundred thousand dollars worth of repairs, which included everything from, um, the exterior siding being taken off and replaced, a new roof, windows, gutters, uh, the interior, the first floor being replaced. Painting, removing the footprint ceilings, the lower level, a complete renovation, uh, re-polishing the cement floors, putting lighting down there. Um, got, um, renovated the bathrooms down there, update even the kitchen flooring, um, and, uh, also look into perhaps some kind of humidity system and the age back to kind of take some of the moisture out of the basement. Um, that easily came to five hundred thousand dollars, it's not a few dollars more. Uh, there is some money in capital, what that project would do, it would take the community house renovations off of the capital plan for at least ten years. Um, by replacing the siding with a hardy plant, we wouldn't have to repaint it in five years. Looking into getting a metal roof, again, that would be thirty years probably to, you know, it would be interior painting that hopefully I could add into the operating budget. Um, so that, that would take that out of the capital budget and that kind of unknown for quite an extended period of time. Um, that's a wish list. Also, we need to look at town hall. Uh, we thought that, you know, ten years ago, when we put forty thousand dollars into the capital for painting and flooring, we thought, oh, that'd be great. Uh, that's not reality, uh, we definitely need all new flooring, we need painting, uh, wall repairs, uh, updates on siding, those kind of things. And everything will be redone. Um, I don't have an exact cost on that yet, I'm still meeting with people and scheduling things to come up as a, a true cost of that, my guess. Because we would, uh, the project would consist of, whether the painter has somebody, or whether we have to hire somebody, but we have to hire an external company to come and move furniture from one half of the building to the other half of the building, to have clean and empty rooms, to replace carpet and flooring and, um, painting the walls and repairing them. Then they'd have to move the furniture back, and we'd have to do the other half of the building, can't really do up and down. It, it first thought, because, you know, we don't want to move everything from the second floor to the first floor, so maybe if we did half and half, it would work easier. Potentially relocating employees to a space like this, so that they could still function at a, a limited basis or work from home for that time period that their offices were disrupted. So there's a little bit more work that I have to do in that process, or coming up with a cost that would be associated with that, to make sure that shut town hall down, because it would, it, it would be a lengthy project because of moving those things and the work itself being done and putting things back, so. That's, I need to do a little bit more research, but I'm sure that we could easily, you know, give five hundred thousand on that one as well, a lot of time it's said, and, um.
Have we ever painted the interior?
It's here, not since I've been here, not.
When the roof was here.
Right, so that.
When roof was first selected.
So that had to be twenty years ago. We've replaced the floor in here, we thought squares was a great idea, it's not. You know, they've been replaced, um, if there were stains, there was gonna be, we ran out of squares, they don't make this carpet anymore, so that period was shot. Um, so, you know, we'll have to do some real research on what would be durable, obviously, in the hallways, thinking of doing more of a vinyl plank, a little bit more durable in the hallways and longer term use. Offices, I'm not so sure if that would work for sound quality, especially upstairs, downstairs. Talk to the flooring people a little bit more, there's been products coming out all the time, whether it be more in the, um, underlayment that goes under that, or whether it's the product itself. Definitely a little bit more research on that, because we have a little bit of time that we can definitely do that.
In, in Barbara, I know, maybe we should have the spot a little bit, I know she was doing some research yesterday, um, discussing, but one of the things we looked at, if the increase, uh, for Steve does affect us, that it goes from five hundred to a million dollars, and we can do something like town buildings.
Wow.
Right, but, yeah, if, because we haven't had Steve Grant since two thousand sixteen, since Walt, so I got this back, you know, quite a while ago. So again, guys, as I said before, we were pre-qualified, um, to the state to, to apply for the Steve. So, um, I think, again, looking at, taking care of the structures, or upgrading, um, materials, uh, all the things that could help, even as, as the, uh, folks from the library were talking about, with energy efficiency and so on, all that kind of stuff would, would, would help this. If we could do something that says both buildings, that we could do buildings, the two buildings that we currently own, which get, oh, a lot of use, so most uses. Senior Center P maybe a little bit, what, it doesn't work there, is of course, um, the new house in here right now. And I don't, did you ever get a chance to look at total numbers, I kind of threw that, I.
Uh, so the community house, uh, Barbara asked me to ask how often it gets used. So far this fiscal year, I've had, uh, twenty-one events in there that have paid contracts. Um, we have two park and rec activities every week in there on a pretty regular basis, and that's been going on for probably over a, well over a year now, probably closer to two years. Um, and from now into the end of the calendar year, I have twelve events booked. But people come in all the time or plummy, and, you know, I'm anticipating probably another ten or so will be on the books before the end of the calendar year.
So in, for twenty, the number you gave us, how, from what, when to when?
So the fiscal year is twenty-one, yes.
Okay, so just, six, five, July.
How much income does that mean?
So I didn't, I didn't get to meet with Barbara, so I don't know where I'm at right now, which is, um, you know, a lot of them are weddings, weddings are, I think, eight hundred dollars a pop, so, um, it's decent relative, um, you know, once we renovate the building, we may have to look at the fee structure to see if it's, um, adequate. But I think people really appreciate that it's affordable, and so I really wouldn't want to take away. I mean, we did implement a few years back a four-hour minimum, so if somebody rents it, you know, it's worthy of us opening the building and doing what we have to do. Um, but that's still only a two hundred dollar rental for a four-hour event. You know, I did.
Is there, is there a difference between resident and?
There is, there was a, a different fee structure for residents and non-residents.
In non-profit, some of those we don't charge for, for community.
No, it's hard times profits, because obviously it's a fundraiser, generally speaking, we don't want to take, you know, the fee away. They do still have to provide insurance, we, you know, that's mandatory, I get that from every renter regardless of, um, who it is or what the event is.
So I did look up the year-to-date revenue, it's been thirteen thousand thirty-five dollars. And I.
That's a good year.
It's not over yet, I still have a few more events before I end this year.
Yeah, and I also did verify that the maximum grant that we can get is five hundred thousand dollars.
So, yeah, so there.
Can, I ask a question. Do any of you guys know if we can get a, a grant from like the Northwest Connecticut Community Foundation, or is that only open to nonprofits?
We can try, but we would be on the bottom of their granting list only because we have taxing authority. So they have a tendency to give the grants to nonprofits that don't have another mechanism like we do for raising these kinds of funds.
Is there any thought of putting sound and light on the stage? Because, I mean, I didn't hear you say that in the list of things, but I think it's key to renovate the place, because there's so many people that would rent it if it had facilities. But when they have to bring all of that in separately and pay for it on a one-off basis, it's.
That's something that I could probably do more through the operating budget, and there is a small amount of money left over from the performers who was in there before, what were they called? Definitely, yes, they had some money that they left, so that's something that definitely will be looked at as well, thank you.
Projection would also be great.
What?
Projection.
Okay, I'll, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the sound system would really help, it isn't very hard to hear.
Well, in the bathrooms and so on, yeah, that's similar to what we have here, yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
And that's, and I, and I think, you know, looking again between, that's revenue producer and obviously there, uh, but it's also a tremendous, uh, facility, we don't, we're looking at a lot of facilities, but that's a tremendous facility that we're using all the time now. Um, and it's used for so many different things, it's big, but, you know, um, you know, where it did at, uh, community, uh, that Kent, uh, nursery school program, it kind of shrunk it in.
I know, your voice really made.
It can't be, but you're right, the, the, um, some of the noise and so on, we, we help them.
I hope it's just get the lower level to be a little bit of a smaller space, but really updated, I mean, it's dark and damp down here right now, but, you know, putting recessed lighting in, replacing the windows, cleaning up the floor. You know, it will really change the atmosphere.
Get a new floor.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so they, what they, what I've looked into doing is grinding down that cement floor, and then they put a new layer. Yeah, so they, what they, what I've looked into doing is grinding down that cement floor, and then they put a new layer, and then they put an epoxy on top of it, so it's a polished concrete, super durable, which is great for a space like that, we need it, um, and it would, uh, definitely enhance the look, it'd still be light enough of a color in the lower basement, but it would, uh, be super durable.
Yeah, the other part is that extending back into what food banks is now, to there be some, you know, opportunities to, you know, like jazz it up a little bit, but make it a little more palatable, a little more, you know, accessible and so on, uh, which is nice, because there's a decent space, I do have the refrigeration and so on, but it's not, you know, you've been there several times here back and forth, so it would help also for the flow and for oversight, which is important. Anyway, so we looked at that, and, and, you know, and looking at the town hall here, I know that we need infrastructure and so on. Um, one of the things we're, I'm looking at right now, and having a gentleman come in and did the school, all our security cams, security systems, uh, which did a very good job of the school, we need to come in here, there's, uh, voting security laws have been, rules have been passed that we have to start looking at, and we have the, I was gonna talk about it in my thing, but we did have Secretary Stain and I had a little discussion with her on some things, so, um, there's something we could do, but I, I think, you know, I don't know, it's, it's up to everybody in here to decide exactly where we wanna go with the STEAM grant, but looking at the community house first, but as a more multipurpose facility right now that we're actually using right now, um, this, I think we could come up with some additional, we have to look at additional funding, we, we need a better zoom system here or online system, we don't have, need a better, um, microphone system, which would come with the whole system, but, um, there are some other reasons, stuff we're still looking at, trying to pursue it, try to do that, because along with some of the, the, uh, uh, requirements, unfunded requirements, comes some funding, a little bit for breaking through, so, um, maybe to talk to, to, like I said, Secretary Stain, Thomas, a little bit about that, so we can get some more support for that, because this is our first thing, we're gonna have the, um, the generator put in here, AC upgrades, we didn't have a low set of funding, but that's really great, so that'll help here. Um, and we do have the backup for voting and so on at the senior center, so that's, we're, we're fairly set there, we do have to put the CN in and then get the CBRS, which is voting, you know, the infrastructure for their, um, IT system setup, um, but as soon as, you know, we have that upstairs, but, uh, to be able to move that around, we have that, I think we can move that in eventually, you know, this is going to be a focus, but, um, anyway, my opinion right now is to look at, at, at the community house, I think we could, it uses, it's such a variety, uses such a great, uh, access for the town, and, um, you know, it's, it's a facility to have everybody.
We, we haven't talked about the Swift House, and we didn't talk about the Swift House as possible, STEAM grant, is it possible to split the STEAM grant between two town buildings?
You wanna, because I asked that question, you wanna handle that one, Barbara, you have experience with that, if you're on?
Um, they prefer not to do that.
Just too much administration.
Because we would actually, we would actually have to submit two applications. We can submit more than one, but we can't ask for more than five hundred thousand dollars total.
Yes.
Yeah, we can, uh, yeah, getting as far as you'd like to get, so, but yeah, so we, yeah, you know, the, the, the house is, is on our agenda to talk about that as well, um. I think. Yeah, there's, yeah, lots of stuff that we need to do as well, uh.
I would, I would really be in support of spending, uh, you know, trying to do a, a grant application for the ADA, so we can get the building open again. Now, and that way you don't have to rely on taxpayer funding.
Yeah, and I think, obviously, you know, we'll discuss, you know, obviously, we'll discuss that more a little bit, but there's a lot we need to do to get this information out to the town and have that informational session we've been talking about, so people really understand that happens discussions and, and see what people, you know, really wanna go, they really might go with this, but anyway, but we are on the, you know, I think it's, what's the date on the STEAM grant again, was it July seventh or tenth? What's the submission or?
Well, the applications are available on July seven, but they have to be submitted by August eighteen at five P M. And then sometime at the end of September is the project grant award notification. And they prefer projects that are shovel-ready.
Yeah. Okay, um, well, again, I just wanna get that out, you know, start the, the ball thinking and, and. Are you thinking of? There you go, fully thinking of it, so anyway, um, so, uh, any other questions about?
Is there a direction you guys, just so that I know where to put, focus my efforts, I mean, if I need to get more information, if you're thinking more town hall might be the way you'd wanna go versus community house, so that I can be ready to provide as much information as I can for the STEAM grant. If you have a feeling, I mean, I'm not saying make a complete decision, but if there's a feeling one way or the other, and I do have to say, you know, the community house does need to work, and if we don't do the work there externally on the envelope, we're gonna end up with a, a, a duplicated situation that we don't want to end up with. Um, here it's more internal, it's more aesthetics in here as opposed to functionality, but again, it's your decision, and I just need to know which way you'd like, you know, focus my efforts if, if that's the direction you're going in. Thank you.
Well, it's a choice between this, the community house and the town hall, I mean, it's definitely the community house for me, um. Do we?
Yeah, you can get more specific.
I agree, I agree, I'd rather see focus on the community house, and particularly because it's getting some more use now. It's getting more use, and people are talking about how nice a facility it is to you. Um. So, but I would really like to see also the Swift House, because I think we're gonna have an uphill battle convincing people to put tax dollars into the Swift House, and I think it's a lot easier if we have a state grant, so I would, I would say we should try to split and figure out how we could pay for the ADA and other items in the community house have to.
Yeah, exactly, well, yeah, I, I like to have the grant program, and you know, hard after that for, for the ADA, that's where we end with the Swift House, right? Issue of taxpayer funding, we went through that, the budget's gonna be interesting thing when they start seeing the actual numbers, I know they've been out there, because we've had them in our, our thing, but people really haven't focused on it, as we find out, they don't, it's a trade problem. But, um, yeah, but I would like to go with the community house, I mean, I, I, you know, walk down here, I'm like, I wanna do more, and I like that this is a room, and this is gonna be a separate thing that we're gonna work on. I think when we look at maybe cameras and security and upgrade for communications, that may be something we go to the board of, of finance with for some other kind of special allocation, uh, because we need to, we need to get this right, you know, it's not right, they need to get that right, and then with the security upgrade that we have to mandate, we're gonna have to go to them and look at that cost, so we need to get that data. But having said that, so putting that aside, if we can get that done here, uh, separately with the board of finance, maybe a different, different item, um, I would go community house as well, because again, it's used, it's available, it's viable to update the, the basement, which we were already looking at the other day, um, or I was, you were as well, but, um, having, you know, rooms available down there, that kitchen, someone, and the functional use expanding on that, again, you know, looking at the, for, there's a two hundred fifty anniversary and using that as well for functions, um, yeah, it's a great, great, bigger area, flexible area, and I like the area of upgrade for the, the pantry as well, pantry piece, so.
Maybe they prefer not to split between two buildings, but I think we should at least look at the Swift House for this, if, if we can. It deserves a look, just radiant.
Uh, okay, but, yeah, we just continue, I and can touch us up and continue.
Well, I see now that, just me, I have to focus on town hall as much, I mean, community house, and then if we design our third house, we're already handled, but at least I know where we're focused on.
I mean, town hall can, can really weigh over.
Like I said, if we're, I mean, it's, it's our customer, I mean, there are things in the capital, like the windows are in the capital, I mean, if we had the state, you know, throwing money at us, yes, I could use it quicker, but we're, I, the building is not in dire media as much as I would say the community house would be.
I would encourage you also to see if there's any local architects that would be willing to like maybe do some space planning, brainstorming when you got with you on the lower level, because I have a feeling that an, an architect looking at that space might give us some great ideas. And there are local architects that probably would be willing to do that, yeah.
Kind of, yeah.
Right.
I think it has a lot of potential, uh, untapped potential in that lower level.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, just sort of bringing it up, it's, it's very, it's very depressing right now. I'm looking on you as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Joyce, appreciate it, thank you, Barbara, um, okay, fire marshal. Okay, um, they said, Sam and Bill is, is leaving us, I have a, a letter from him, it says, uh, May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Martin Liar, from Sam and Bill and Fire Marshal, various resignations, this is my notification to the town, and I'll be residing as fire marshal for the town effective thirty June, thirty, twenty twenty-four, and my honor to serve in the past thirty-four years. To the era, right, but he's still around, still gonna be over shared, the honor is shared, right, but anyway, so, um, and they motion to accept the nature of our.
So moved with deeper regret.
Red against deeper red, okay, second, second with red, second over red, second red, and all, any questions or thoughts?
Thank you, Stan.
I have learned in, in many years, I was his deputy marshal, he's been with me here, he's a good friend, and he's been a great servant.
Yeah.
He really is.
He's, yeah, he's creating, he's chairing, he's the suspenders. She's up in the B M S right now, we had to, to crack it down, make sure I got the formal, I have a piece of paper, but but he's been working with us to, uh, on that, as, as we work towards working on the, uh, our job description, which is back, well, we need to go on, so let's go ahead. What, I'll, okay, then.
Hi, hi.
Thank you, all right, so now, uh, he said, um, he agreed to stay through June, um, so that we could, uh, go through our process of getting the, uh, job description put together, uh, and actually to set up a committee, uh, to go out and advertise, Warren has done that, some others have done that, um, so, uh, there, there are people in play, fire marshals play around, so it's, looks like it'll be a good time, actually, looking for, for a fire marshal as well as any deputies. Um, I know if you had a chance to look at, at the job description, this came out of, um, review between Sharon, uh, uh, he, our, what we had here was a incomplete one, because Stan had come as a contractor, and they didn't really ever, you know, put out the full description together, so we took what had been, um, used, they converted it into a contractor to a town employee, um, we went to Sharon, we went through Warren, and then state, and the states, uh, required for fire marshal, and we pulled this in, so, um. I'll, uh.
I didn't get to answer it, I didn't see it this morning.
Okay, I mean, I looked at it, went through it, but I didn't have the time to.
I happened to be talking with Stan yesterday, and he mentioned to me that there's actually the state statute where we could um, give preference to a deputy.
Correct, right, we've gone with that, yeah, I, I've talked to, uh, to, uh, Tim Limos, who's a deputy, I've talked to the lawyers about that, preference means preference, that's not me, automatic, and only if there's a resignation do we automatically move up our hundred eighty days, we, we, we're gonna be fire marshal into the fire marshal position, we could do that, uh, without any kind of that's it, the, the preference is only that, so we did check to see exactly what it was, keeping with our stated goals anyway, of opening up most every position, at least to see what we have for the two weeks, and anybody's there, preference, um, so I, part of the preference, I sat down with him and explained the whole situation, told him what we're looking at doing, had got his input on, on, you know, his thoughts on, on some of the position, the, excuse me, job description areas, we also sent this back down to, uh, the news, uh, for them to look at and for Joe Manley to look at, um, so this is where all that input is, I know that it's a lot in, but, you know, it's curious.
A few years ago.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, I, I would, uh, take a minute for you guys to look at it, I would like to try to get this approved tonight so that we can start the process before we be too long in, in, in holiday and then June. Start, I, I would like also to, uh, form a committee.
Do we require something to be part of the evaluation question?
Yeah, sure, right. Yes, must have and maintain, must have, maintain. Must have, it will take five. Especially hard, but to pull them out of the state's picture. Fire marshals.
Are we allowed to give any kind of? This is, this is, we've a lot here, Stan's been very good about the process of town, we're a lot, but he's also had a lot of getting easier.
Right.
Um, are we allowed to give preference to somebody who lives in Kent?
Anybody who is in the fire department of a district in Kent, preference to many of the positions. Yeah, it's kind of how the state looks at it, and it's not, you know, doesn't bother me, but it gives preference, because we do want that local knowledge and ability and access, I mean, people, people for so, um, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I honestly, it must be. It's a piece that I think they were in state, uh, the last one, job during, it's got everything in all of it.
Typo, word permit. Under receives plants, allocation.
Okay, oh, permit of this space.
So we use something, oh, he uses.
Yes, um, right, proposed to do that for burn permits and so on, Open Gov, you know, that's the one that, uh, the new series is now, and there's different modules, some of those are cost, um, the program that, um, that Stan and Tim wanted to, to, to issue, it's already in that program, um, isn't exactly aligned directly to it, but they do different functions, but Open Gov, yeah. Talked to, that's where we went down and talked to Ty and town public to, Open Gov can do to improve, uh, work with the fire marshal as well, and then what was it? And he also plans, uh.
All right, the, the one, the new software that they're gonna use on the, I bet doesn't.
Are you saying that?
No, they would use it, Open Gov, they would use Open Gov, yeah, they would, yeah, that would be, they, they. So. One of the things we did make sure we put in is, um, because what's really been great about Stan and Joe, and they're, um, they are here together two days, um, and so we thought it was important that they be at least two hours in the office, open to the public that they'd be available, oftentimes, depending on what their function may be, whether they're firefighter or paramedics over else, work here in town as well, there's all kinds of, fit that bill, right, um, so some of their, their availability may be limited, but felt important to at least be here to work with their land use people, uh, we have the building inspectors, because that coordination and getting out on jobs or discussing a job together, not go back and forth, Stan was amenable to that as well, we, and we looked at it, we talked to land use, we talked to Stan, everything else, and he openly said, that's pretty good, now, but currently Tuesday and Thursday, again, because of both work schedule, we have Tuesday and Thursday, um, I know that Joe Manley is, um, is bringing in some of his jobs, so his availability may be more open, so it could shift depending on who comes in, whether they have, have a schedule that comes down on Wednesday, not Tuesday, or maybe sort of Thursday or Friday, we may be able to work that, but at least that they're be here in the town together, you know, working with, with, uh, the land use folks as well, and the building folks, um, so that they have some synergy together go over plans, the trial interview, and figure out how they're gonna address it, and the people need to come in and talk to them. That's what I'm just kind of thinking.
I mean, it is possible that we might find that that's not possible.
Correct, right, but, yeah.
I mean, I think it's a great goal, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say for somebody not to even apply if, if they know their schedule can't allow that, you know.
Right, well, that.
I, I mean, that's my feeling, because like today with everything being aligned and, you know, a plan review is not the same thing as it used to be, you know, you can, you do a lot of electronics, so.
Yeah, right, well, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, but. Yeah, exactly, exactly, and, and when you stand and his electronic was an individual, it seemed like, and he did use his phone, but, uh, yeah, it was, it's different now that we're gonna look at iPad or iPads and things like that. Um, but still, I, I think it's, it's a goal, I mean, it's a, it can't reach a permanent, yeah, it didn't, it didn't wrong, um, suggesting, really, but, uh, just again, if they're open to the public for a conversation, you're talking, or having somebody to be about whether the town is actually in here or they're visiting school, or they're doing something else like that, as part of the whole public, so, yeah, I, I see what you're saying, and, and I think, you know, that's, again, one of the criteria, but isn't the owner has to be the primary one for sure, so.
Right, okay, I've read through it.
Yeah, it's just as we go.
And it would be nice to have it formatted the same way as the other ones that we've been doing recently, so.
We're, we're, that's the whole point, so I was jumping in, so we're just talking about that, we're gonna tear apart the procedures and policy and procedure manual, because it is. Different, and it's not forbidden correctly, we have one that's been shoved things in it for years, we're actually gonna do it offsite. She, Joyce and I, and we're actually gonna tear apart, section it off, and start working at it, like, I actually did that at the school, where we had to go through hundreds and hundreds of policies, you know, the books we had, or. We don't know if we have, but when we figured it out exactly what we needed to do, what we had to be, bring things up to speed, and up to reality, and what was going on, it took us a while to do it, but at least we're gonna organize it and start doing. I like this format, we'll. See, yes, some suggestions and some reservations, but because that's experience, but we'll work on that, but yeah, we're gonna come where everything is the same, so it's not looking different when we get it here. To look at, we have the same format and so on, but there's policies and procedures, and we'll talk a little bit of that later, and all kinds of things that we. There's gray areas or open areas, and we need to kind of bring it together, I think it's just gonna help us in town, yeah, so anyway, that's where we're gonna plan, so. Alright, so if you're willing, a motion to approve the. For the job description for fire marshals. So. You have the discussion. Right, now to move to the actual hiring process, I'd like to nominate a committee for the hiring process of the fire marshal. When I was working there, myself, and Joe Manley, so we agreed to, so we. Our buildings back here, and worked closely with that, so those three people, I think. Enough.
Um, we wanna have the fire department.
Um.
They work mostly.
Yeah, but I'm not sure who's gonna apply, I don't know, you know, saying, because there are some people who do work there, who will apply, and that's part of the preference, and kind of. We have think the experience we have, I'm not a third person, but it's gonna be open to that, you do know a little bit, a little bit on it, unless you have that experience, so, and that's why I don't know.
I was just thinking about, I will go chief.
Yeah. Sure.
Okay.
Let's keep it to three right now. Okay, that's great.
I make a motion to have a fire marshal hiring subcommittee, consisting of Marty Lindemann, Lynn Worthington, and Joe Manley.
You're our new agent. Okay.
And what are we gonna, what is? The amount that we're gonna advertise it for?
Well, that's, that's, we're gonna actually have a discussion of that with, I think, with Barbara, because we took off money on the job descriptions. Because we didn't wanna lock in to it, because it's gotta be.
Yeah, 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 I know, but when we advertise, I think it's important to say how much it is.
Well, we'll do, I think we need to arrange, I think it's experience wise, and I think we need, as a committee, need to table Barbara, what we can do based on, you know. Experiences in the military trade show, too, might be, as well, maybe we can bring Stan in to talk a little bit about that as well, he's a high, fairly high range right now, others. Well, exactly, but I wanna look at what, you know, Warren's going to hiring commission right now, so I wanna look what they're doing, I haven't really looked at their numbers, and just ask for the job description. So, I think get that for us, for us, committee to decide what we think is a good idea.
Can we, um, from COG, does COG have that salary served paper?
Yeah, we do have that, I don't, yeah.
I know it's hard, because every town's gonna be different, and for the fire marshal.
Yeah, I think you have that, I have it, I think it's, yeah, if you don't have it, I'm not sure, but. This is the motion, I don't think we gotta say.
Oh, I'll second the motion, I thought we did.
Uh, to me, too, so I think, I think I seconded.
Did you second it, Landon?
Oh, okay, I wasn't, oh, so it wasn't.
We seconded this, okay, I would, we seconded.
I was reading what Martin said, because I thought it did, I thought it did.
Well, I actually thought I raised my hand, yeah, sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you, so, okay, so the motion's okay, so. Yeah, yeah.
I was just thinking, I wanna get advertised.
Exactly, and we'll, we'll pull that together for the, you know, the information on advertising.
Well, by the way, you already know what the maximum can be, because you already have a budgeted.
Right.
Right, you know, so I mean. I have an estimate, you know, so that we can advertise it, maybe we can. Take a five thousand off or something at the low end, or, I mean, you know, you only have something.
Yeah.
We have this big of a window anyway, so, I don't, we're still having a change, I don't know what the budgeted salary is for that line.
What do you mean?
What, how much is the, how much is the hourly rate of pay that Stan was getting?
So, Stan submits his invoices. And he decided the hourly rate of pay, that isn't set by us.
Wait, he's a town employee?
But he set his own hourly rate, you guys didn't.
What, what was he getting paid?
Um, hold on. Just give me a second, I have to get out of what I was doing and go into something else.
Barbara, I know that helps for you.
You know what?
I know what he was getting paid an hour.
Oh, then offer it up.
Uh, he's forty dollars an hour, and he was getting a two point five, that's what the twenty four, twenty five budget was anticipating.
No, I don't think he was getting forty an hour, I think he was already at forty five, but hold on, let me verify that. He's at forty four nineteen.
Okay.
An hour, but then there's other, there's some hours that he splits with. Two other towns, so we pay that rate, but only a third of it, for some of the hours, but there's very few. Hours at that lower rate, most of them are at the forty four nineteen.
But we're not happy about this position splitting with another town, right?
No, we're not splitting this position.
That's what he's getting, and then we would be giving him thirty five dollars in change a month for his phone. And then hours for continuing education. And then separate hours for fire marshal investigation, so he, the way his bills come through, or his. I guess you can call them time sheets, but they really are a little different than regular time sheets. He puts his mileage on there, and he puts how many hours for fire investigations, how many hours for continuing education, and then how many hours for just fire marshal duties.
But he gets the same rate for. He, he gets paid the same rate for continuing education or fire investigations, right?
Yeah, unless it's being split with the town, the education is usually split with the other two towns, but. It's the forty four nineteen divided by three.
I think we need to know what it is.
I agree.
I just think it's important, I mean.
No, it is. See what the market is, and see what's going on, so.
I mean, I have no idea.
Yeah. Like four. I'm not sure when you came to. What? Let me talk to him. In case he works here. I'm just probably gonna use anything on his.
I mean, I guess that is a question, though, Stan told me he's just gonna work, he's just gonna do Sharon. So, what are these other towns doing, are they, are they also looking, are they looking to share? Fire marshal or?
Well, I think because of the number of hours, this is the minimum hours where we can clear fire, and then other associated things like training and so on, that's where you kind of, it benefits. Not like we did with the, it benefits like any other town that we work with, so yeah, they could have a second job, a fire marshal job, it could be, you know, assistant fire marshal job, one talented fire marshal, and the other. If, what I understand, like stated others, that's kind of how I'll do it, but. As far as the hourly rate, that's the piece that I wanna make sure we are in the right ballpark, or that we, you know, track it, the rest are incidentals to whatever, like. Or someone will be invoiced to us for, or, you know, training, or. A feature different.
And I mean, in the past, they sometimes served as deputies, like Stan might be deputy in another town, even though the town he's not.
Right.
So, I mean. That is something I have to think about, because I mean, him stepping back affects more than just.
It does, yeah, it does, well, yeah, Ken Morris, I think, because he is staying in Sharon right now, but it affects us a lot, because the clerical work is important, and. Tim, I see you're on there, but we had talked about that, because it's something that he, having done it in support of him at Sharon, we didn't do a lot of it here. But now there's gonna be probably more of it, especially when you, you know, whoever is there, and, you know, Tim's always a deputy, just so here we have to pick that up, that's why we got the computers without, and things like that, and the phone. But, yeah, they're gonna spend a little more time inputting information where maybe someone else did, or Sharon. What I understood is this stampede for some of that, some other out of his own. It wasn't really the point kind of thing, I mean, I just hired my someone else. But, yeah, so I think we.
So, do you know which towns he was working for?
She, all I knew, are you, I'm not sure, it was Sharon and.
Cornwall.
Cornwall, that's right, sorry.
And Falls Village.
He was Falls Village as well.
And he was a horn?
Not to my knowledge, my knowledge, he's doing Sharon and Cornwall, because. When you divide his education by three, that's all you get.
Um, he was doing, he's doing Falls Village, I know that from personal experience, doing Falls Village.
But maybe under a different capacity.
Maybe, but. It's worth talking to the different, for select ones, is my point.
I'll, I'll send some, I have got a ton going on tomorrow, but I will be able to call and. I bet by next week, maybe, I think, since our group together. Ready for a vote of motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
In favor.
Hush.
So, we're having an advertisement until this group meets.
Yeah, that's actually, yeah, well, I want to be, everybody gets something. Any questions you have, we just. Okay, we're, Marshall's Park and Rec job descriptions, um, turn this right over to our big park and rec directors.
Karen first, Karen first. I'm gonna join you guys at the table, so I'm not yelling at you for this, but. So, thank you all for taking the time to talk about the job descriptions, the commission and I met to discuss the job descriptions that we have. We were working on updating the rec aid job description, which is listed here as program assistant, it's the partner recreation, program assistant is the title of it. Then we're gonna talk about camp director, just to update that one, and then the actual program director, which we cannot find a current job description on, other than just the job listing. So I wanna just walk you guys through it, and happy to answer any questions that you have, and just go from there. So, start off with park and rec program assistant, so the park and rec program assistant, this is changing over the title of recreation aid. The rationale behind this is so that we can look for people who are interested in looking for parks and recreation, working in our programs, working part of our parks, working in our fields, assisting us with maintenance. It took the current recreation aid job description and just condensed it, so there is some stuff that was written out multiple times, such as assisting, developing, setting up, executing, facilitating, leading, breaking down partner recreation department. Activities, and then said camps, and then said events, and then said leagues and programs, and I just condensed all that to make it one pull bullet point, to make it just smooth, clean, concise. Um, I added this sort of as point contact, add activities, programs, and leagues, so if there is a park and rec. Program assistant at baseball, there's somebody who can call me and say, hey, there was an issue tonight, we had someone who fell and I had to give him a nice pack, or, hey, the shed's locked in, can't get in, the key broke, is there something that we can do to unlock it? So it's someone who's a point contact to allow for us to have multiple events going on at the same time, and also for us to have some sort of representation at all of our events. So, for example, tonight for pickleball and baseball, I was at pickleball, and we had a brigade at baseball to assist us, so. Having two people at the same time at once to allow for multiple programs to happen at the same time is something that's seamless, and will allow for us to really operate and just grow our programs, and provide to the community in more efficient capacity. Um, assisting with the office duties, that was in there, but it was refined to assist with setting up for events, roster development, flyer production. Um, it's about responding to communication, so if I ask them to make a phone call for me on my behalf, or to just reach out to somebody and say, hey, do you mind just calling? I G A, don't let them know I am on my way, I'll be there in about five minutes, just for somebody to give me that assistance. And to be available in the office, and to conduct minor maintenance of the parks, so that'd be assisting with grooming of the fields, cleaning the tents, of course, we need someone to use. Um, room to just push off leaves and sticks and twigs. Um, trail maintenance to assist me if we were to go up the trail and cut some trees down that were on the trail, or to just move some small items that are on the trail, causing some blockades to. Really enhance the trail and just allow us to have free flow with it. Um, and this is not necessarily overstepping any sort of maintenance department duties that we have here in town, this is just as minor maintenance, so that we're not asking and overreaching from what. Uh, reformer might have with his staff, but just asking for that small minor assistance that could be done with staff that are available. And then it really just added in the attend trainings, events, meetings, and other functions as required for supervisor, and then perform other duties designated supervisor, and job description may be changed at any time by supervisor. That, again, looking at how this all functions with the town, it could be. That could be changed to JavaScript, and may change based on any time by supervisor permission and board of selection, just to. After going through this experience and thinking about it a little bit today, that could be something that we can enhance, but, you know, that's the walkthrough of the recreation, park and recreation program assistant.
And this one was really done there recently, I think it might have been twenty three, but. Yeah, so. But it is.
I don't know if you wanna go one by one, or?
There was, there was a name about the eight two.
An age, easier to find, and if we were to post a position, those that are looking for recreation aid positions might find them for therapeutic recreation homes, or for therapeutic recreation, assisting rehab facilities, and. As creative service that is, that's not what we're providing at the moment, so I'd like to look for someone who's assisting with programs, wanting to build with the.
Yeah, can't. I mean, if you guys don't have questions, maybe we can just approve them all at once, I don't know, what do you think?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
After school is just refining the job, and that was available, and camp directors providing the current, you know, some. Current language, and just to express what a camp director should be doing, so.
Um, one of the questions that. I had, I think you had talked into the principal of the school, is when they're in the building, even though it's after school hours. They really go into the offices of the principal. Some point, correct, or, I mean, there's, there's a, it was a gray area.
Well, yeah, that's.
What doors you open, what you can go and do, but I mean, there, there's some overarching school rules with A S P and so on, I could be. Or he, whatever, we, that's A S O, excuse me, after A S O, A S P, we'd go later, and so. Any of that.
I think we did, I'm pretty sure we had that, because they have to enforce things ruled set by Kent Center School.
Yeah, that's awesome.
And follow the rules set by the school.
Okay.
With that, or what they're about to.
Again, I just wanna make, yeah, I wanna make sure that we're protected as well, um, yeah.
I mean, I'm more than willing to use that statement to say, you know, if there's anything.
No, just looking for, again, um. And sharing calendars, and that was the only, the question I had, I wanted to make sure that, that, obviously, you know, the school principal and the board know this stuff, that's the rules inside that building, we've talked, I've talked about that before. Um, but, um, yeah. As long as it's. Sort of really, maybe it's more my. Acceptance of, you know, that probably is a pretty good statement there, I guess. Okay.
I mean, there.
We can get into two.
Do we think strengthen if we wanna strengthen, or that happens?
No, I, I don't want, again. I'm gonna do it on some network, and put, you know, town versus school, understand, when you're in that building, working in that building, and rules and regulations, and I guess that does set by. Kids their school, but they can't really come in and direct you to do anything, anywhere, play here, do whatever, I guess I could coordinate, but that's kind of, you have. Yeah, okay. I guess that's okay, and I don't wanna get again, like I said, I'm not gonna try to get into retail. So, to make sure that. Yeah, it's, I was fine with the new camp here. Motion except.
Yeah, for now, just a camp director having the thing about DCF to.
After. Um, if he does. It's the fourth bullet point in the box.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Motion said on the. And recreation program assistant, camp director, the school program descriptions.
Second.
Okay, okay, any discussions, doubts, comments? Yeah, great, all favor.
Okay, keep that advertised.
Ideas? Okay, got it now.
Thanks a lot, thanks for being here.
Performance objectives. We talked about, um, we in general have talked about that, we did, you know, see the twelve thousand five hundred pass through on our budget. Um, and I used, and I pulled this together, um, I've gone over it with our HR. We're actually choice and some others, um, I pulled it from. Eleven different school, uh, towns, different forming, some very basic and some were very intricate. Um, and also my experience, I mean, worked with um, setting up a performance appraisal and then the objective, job objectives, you kind of put it into two. Sections, like put the appraisal first, because that's kind of what you go to, but working from the back, if you want to, you can test, um. From the, well, actually, page three, which talks about establishing goals. Um, these goals aren't, it isn't supposed to be one per, it can be as many as you need, but I didn't want to have it go on forever. Uh, goals are what we're supposed to be able to achieve them all in the timeframe, so um. When we looked at the ratings, this is kind of rating scale, exceptional goal, exceeded goal met, goal completed, insufficient are. Pretty standard in a lot of things, five scale, one scale, um. So anyway, we came through this, I came through it and and wrote out the um, stamp, previously established goals, which can move from like. This year into next year, because no goal really is, if it's a one year thing, uh, and I'll take um, uh. The land use with their open government system, it took them a while to develop it, two, two um, fiscal years ago, this fiscal year to implement it, next fiscal year to go to see and upgrade, make great. Uh, statements to it, so those goals can be, you know, significant across areas, and one goal from last year can influence a goal from next year, right? Successful implementation rollout, but upgrading and 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 gathering more data and finding out what you can use it for, like we're doing it with. For, for purpose and so on, so, so I think they always had that one, but anyways, so those are the kind of things you can put down, and then, um. You know, in the comment section, um, just support the rating given and specific comments back to each goal. Now, this is what the goal is, what the individual sets, right, in in conjunction with commissions or committees, um, that work that out, because obviously they were close to, this is. You know, what we want to achieve as an organization, um, the only one is social services, it doesn't have a real committee with it, although she does have. Uh, like ten community fund, it does help support her, so. That would be the individual's, you know, impetus to go out and work with them and say, hey, how could I help better through your eyes and your experience to do that? And then you so set those goals for yourself, those goals would um generally be then reviewed um by the reviewer, and in most cases, department is, that would be me, uh, as chief executive here. Um, using that, I don't like you said, but it is the state uses it, so, um, and then at that point, um. Went during the course of the of the year or some fiscal year calendar year, I'll actually. Prescribed a little, I think, or recommend a little different type, not like a cap, a fiscal year, more of a calendar year, so we have. Uh, an evaluation process that gets done around the December, January timeframe, as we go into budget time. So we actually have an evaluation, it's been worked out, discussed, reviewed, uh, updated, with commission, with the boards, everything else, so. Individuals actually have something to go through to look at, and not waiting to June to do it in a calendar, in fiscal year, and we've already got through the budget season, we kind of.
Yeah.
Found ourselves stuck with that, it's kind of really why I'd like the twelve five piece, um, now, is we could work on that, that ninety day deal. So that's kind of the, the, my thought on the goals and so on, and I, and any kind of comments, changes, and you have to make, um, this is. We're just starting it here, I want you to go, we'll see, you know, um. Uh, and so, and so, um, you should go through the bottom, if they want to set something down the line, you know, working these goals and hoping some days you get to there, and it just gives them this again to. Just string out, you know, and really project out what they want to do with their program. Um, and that's, it gets it to reference, it's not a, again, it's not a value, it's just a reference point, uh, for the evaluator and reviewer and the individual themselves, and to track what they're doing.
So, um, in terms of who the reviewers are, like, if somebody is a clerk, then their department head would be the reviewer.
Absolutely.
And then, are you also gonna see those?
I'll see, yeah, they'll be, yeah, at the end, right, yeah, there's no reviewer, there's no reviewer reviewer, like, in military, we had sixteen different levels of review, and it got to be. Took forever to get to somebody that liked the wording and then all the way back, so, no, these are the ones that, and that's leadership piece, and and that's going to go onto the actual. Um, appraisal, having the, the description and, and looking for, I think, uh, and the common disease of of the people that we have here, so, but, um.
My, my only concern is I was seeing this as. The goals part is definitely like self evaluation, like I wanted to see people. You know, employees talking about what they wanted to. Um, what they wanted to accomplish, what they wanted to improve on, um. And I actually pulled together some stuff, like on a self evaluation point of view. That, you know, there would be like an I statement of. I believe my skills, da 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 da, whatever, um, and then. Situations where they feel like they met that standard, so. It, it makes, and I don't know, I, I just pulled together some different things, and some of it is probably similar to yours, but, um. I don't know if it's something we want to. Cause I think, I think there might be more buy in from the employees if they were. They were looking at it as a self evaluation, and then they're sitting down with their supervisor, and they go through the self evaluation part. To, and maybe would help develop the goals.
Right, I was gonna say.
You know, maybe it's a step before the goals, I don't know.
Exactly, I like that, is, you know, that is something that people should have, these are good things to use, actually, in a multi-step process. Self evaluation working, same with the commission working, with people setting their goals, and then using it to fill this, and then do evaluation against. Well, you know, you looking at and what the reviewers looking at and coming to conclusion, that's kind of where, that's the comments piece that I really want, is when we come to conclusion, and then. Any comments that they have at the end, there is a spot on page four, where people can say, you know. Employees comments and reviewers comments, and then, um, training, you know, training completed, this is still a block I wanted to put in, but, but yeah, so the employees, but so. This is, it's kind of like, again, I'm working kind of backwards.
Yeah, yeah.
So this, I like this as a prep. Uh, piece to that, that we certainly could work.
Particularly since a lot of these people haven't had to do this before.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So, just to even think about how do you set up goals in a way, I mean, the best goals are measurable goals, so.
Yeah, right, but it sometimes it takes a while for them to be going to work, and and some are are more personally related, yes, some are business related, so, yeah, that's the tall part of it. And I think that in the evaluation, I think it gets to having. Yeah, um, again, um. My plan right at this point, is a calendar year again, um, to go through with what we're trying to do with the first thirty or ninety days. Does have a ninety day piece at the top, so this would be, you know, first will be marketing for ninety days, and then. But, um, would be like around June third, and we can work on it, in between now and then, um. Incorporating this, the self evaluation piece to it is fronted, it's its own package, to go before team, I want to have a, uh. Staff meeting around the third to bring this into their thoughts, get some feedback from them, uh, as well, and then actually put together something by mid part of June. Uh, to that last, you know, give them a week or two in June, and maybe the first week in July to actually build their. Self evaluation, their goals objectives and so on, um, and and then a. Possible understanding what we're doing, where we're going, and then, um, as an overall. Process would be to go through the ninety days until September, and then have them do the snapshot view of that for the twelve five. Now, we'll have to get together and figure out again exactly how we wanna think we. Fortune, or in, or it's been, whatever it is, um, allocation at twelve five, it's gonna be an interesting time, it's gonna be, you know, something. Us, for our people to understand. But, but you know, for the folks to understand, for us actually come some, understanding how we wanna do it, so that it's, it's fair and equitable, but, um, you know, again, just. If you look at it. Both incentive, incentivizing and if the warning is encouraging and all that stuff apart, but we only have that twelve five, we can do what we can do, but every little bit. Boost up, you know, the base, which is again, part of what we wanted to do this year, and then, and then really, we can look at this, um. Here's September, really put it in place for. Next year, September to November as a valuation period. Again, having it all go through the process of reviewing, comments back and forth can be to a. An assessment, and then having assessments done, goals objectives looked at by the time we started the. Budgeting process, so people know where they're staying, they have a good idea, they feel confident, what they've achieved, um, again, they have some time. Before to bring yourself forward, but also time to work on it, and that, that part of fiscal year, that we're working on for the next fiscal year. I just want, I know what I can wait until June, we start.
Now, I'm blaming.
How much, yeah, that's the way to do it, yeah.
But I may originally talk about this, you said multiple times. That, um, longevity was hard, so how does that figure in?
Well, that is part of where we have to look and, and squaring all this up, this is more a performance that we'll have. Uh, I think with that, with, uh, from a sheet on this will be a lot of better than the competition and so on, um, they better. W before, they come in the top, maybe all that kind of background in the individual will come into play, that's kind of what we're gonna have to work, we're gonna think for the. How we, do we give a two percent level, for everybody that's over ten years, we're gonna have to come up with that, over the next couple of months, we're gonna have. Yeah, well, how we wanna achieve, it's kind of an evaluation criteria for us to assign the fun, the fun, funs, the fun to. You know, so.
How does the, I mean, we can talk about this more, but like. That step process that the school uses for the teachers. I mean, longevity is built into that, right?
It is, and 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 then graduate plus six and, you know, things like that, you know, uh, so, um, that's a unionized function, they do that with the.
I know, but I mean, I wonder if there's anything there.
Well, I'd like to look at that, yeah, yeah, I'd like to look at that.
Just a little chart, I mean.
And and it just, you understand, this does not apply to our union guys.
Right, right.
But, um, yeah, I'd like to look at it. If we want to decide to go in that direction, um, you know, we have some time to look at that, um, to actually implement a step program or. Uh, in longevity, five, ten year, whatever we want to do, ten years, whatever, um, we could do that as well on top of that, along with this for criteria. For, you know, a basis of bringing everybody along, um. And we have listed reality, how much money are we gonna have in our budget to be able to give.
Yeah.
Program raises all the time, and we kind of, I mean, in the past, it's been kind of a, you know, that three percentage, you know, we use as a, in the bump, but, um, you know, we. There's some people don't get that, and and, you know, and. As we saw, there's the numbers on the budget. Happy that we gave any kind of raise to anybody, or any kind of bump or nothing. Cost of living thing. So we'll get any less weight to hang up, and you know, again. I like that different of a step, I like that different longevity, and maybe put something to it, because, again, as we said right from the beginning, you're right. Um, people have been here that long, committed that much to the town, into knowing their business, that's valuable to us.
You said you created this from a bunch of other towns, you know, which other towns?
Um, it was Talon, um, uh. Yeah, um, Talon was one, um, uh. Stanford, or Stanford looked at one, um. Best towns, I always come. Um, they had very small, sure, but there was, um. Oh, gosh. Let me get the, let me get.
Yeah, I meant to bring it up.
Yeah, I did listen, it's on X probably. Because they're all in there, a bunch of them. But I did like this one, this was one of the ones, the format one I liked, so I just did it for, and then we wrote some of the things, but. So.
I wanted to, my big goal with this is I wanted to see people stepping above the. Like that they're showing. To me, that, that, those are the people that I want to reward, that are with salary, volunteer, is. You know. This is my job, but these are, this is what I get in it's the operation of this. I'm not sure it's our own somehow, I'm not sure this.
Well, I don't know, I mean, um.
Cause we're not, are we really giving, we're not really giving. I'm a little worried that it's, it's heavy on. The reviewer. And now, except for the goals, we're not asking the employee.
Um, well, you know, this.
I mean, I've been talking with three, it means the process that they, they talk and say. This is how, I just feel like we should be having data on health, how are they demonstrating this, they're down now, how is it? How, and the customer service. I mean. Is that, is that part of the process, that they sit down and talk it through?
That's part of the process. Exactly, absolutely, yeah.
I feel like there should be more on paper though.
Yeah, well, that's, again, this could be part of that, but you know, I mean, some of that is, is that, you know, we must like found it, support the reading, so it has to be specific, so. Um, getting something from the individual, let's say, just going to initiate. To only get through super responsibilities, and we, and if you can come up with different thoughts and ways to frame this, that might bring something out, please, um, again, just. Or film or whatever, but I'm not. Beyond my help, um, whenever that people present itself, uh, those are the ideas and ways to improve processes, businesses, related.
When do you want to finish copy of this?
Um, I'd like to have just a working copy, um. By around the third, so I can talk, talk if overall, including, I like this, this piece of self evaluation on the third, but we have that. Stat meeting. And it's not finalized, then, but the comments, I'll give it out to them, they can chop on it, go back, again, I want the, you know, all the. Our heads and other people to be able to say, hey, I like it or I don't like this, and why, and then try to come up to something news, and then a couple of weeks after that, actually have something. That by our fourth meeting, June, um, and have that out, something accepted, and then they, you know, then they have a week or two into June, and then to July, that actually. Pull together, they pull evaluation, start their, their goals, and it's what I'm sure they're thinking about now here. I like. Uh, creatures. Want to interview me, morning.
It's really in my selection report, so.
As, um, let's get to Swift House.
Oh.
I have a, I, I want to say this about Swift House, so, I guess this is how I want to start that conversation, so. The April eighteenth minutes that we approved earlier today. So, next steps, which we alluded to already. The board of select and charge the Swift House Task Force with the following. Uh, prioritizes there are repairs to be done, it's in the current operating budget, and next is. Finding contractors to facilitate the repairs. Find location for the kitchen, kitchenette. To help with the, so, so. So we agreed to that, that's what I think, that's the pickup for this piece, that to do. So if a, I guess the question is. Should a Swift House Task Force member have. An idea, a suggestion beyond that. Where does that go? Because when.
Back to us.
Back to us, so, so if a member of the Swift House Task Force has. A suggestion, an idea, or something outside of the scope of those next steps. That should be in writing to us for a meeting for us to discuss.
I guess I'm a bit of a.
And then we, we discuss it and. It might go back to Swift House Task Force, it might not, based on this, I mean, it's outside of scope, but at least we discuss that. Ourselves. That's how, that's how this is set up. That was my understanding.
Yes, um, you know, obviously that was.
So, so, that's how, that's how I'm starting, so, so what do we, what, what, what do we think about that? And then you're here, I'd like to hear your opinion, but what, what do we think? About the Swift, you know. Because people have ideas about the Swift House and we want to make sure procedurally it goes in the right direction. It, 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 it seems that it's going to go through us. And then back to the Swift House Task Force. We believe this.
So that's why I'm here.
Okay.
Because. We, based on that meeting that, um, Glenn referred to. We called a meeting, we met in the Swift House. We understood that the primary focus was to, um, determine where the kitchenette would be. We didn't want the kitchen in the back and that we would take that and, um. We would also, because the. The, what you would approved at the meeting in terms of communication with Silver Peach Chilling. Was that it was approved with some modifications. And so the primary modification was get rid of the kitchen, do a kitchenette, but modifications in plural. And while we were there. We looked at the plan carefully, depending on context of the building. And there were a couple of other things that we felt were important, that we made a vote about. In particular. Can't believe that I, I did a list for you. I've like picked up the wrong reading folder, but it's all here on the, the plan. Um, we decided that the best place for the kitchenette is here. I talked to Tim that and he said. We can cut back this, lose the door and this will be ADA accessible and that would be fine. This is the circle that they use for the diameter of the turnaround. It has a twenty four inch counter, which is standard kitchen dimension. And there could be, you know, appliances under that half, you know, small refrigerator, whatever. So lose the kitchen here. Um, everyone thought that this, this is a smaller space than it appears on the drawing. And there really is no need to have a petition here and make it two spaces. You could put bifold doors there and then you could, could divide it if you wanted to. But mostly it would probably be used as an open space. Moving the kitchen from here to there, this becomes a cloakroom. Uh, of stacked chair storage for use wherever. So this is the first priority. The second priority was here. Tim had taken off this wall. And I don't know if that's a new petition or I think it is. So there's this little alcove here. And when you are standing in the room and looking at it. It's really kind of weird because it used to be a fireplace that was set in a wall. And then it became just a fireplace that ends right at the end of a mantle. With this pocket of space having no purpose. So we wanted to keep the wall intact here. And then this could be a small coat closet or whatever. And it still allows the proper access to the toilet, so that was the second recommendation. The third was get rid of this wall. Um, we all agree, this has very nice woodwork on this wall, this is the main fireplace. In the main room. And. This door. Is the same color in the work and it just adds to the ambiance of the room. And also it means that if you're having a function here or. You know, or whatever. To have a door here means that people can come and go to the kitchen and work in this space and you're not looking at it. Whatever's going on. So we made that recommendation.
Wait, I'm, I'm clear, that recommendation, there should be a door, there should.
There, there is a door, they were proposing that it be removed.
Oh, so you wanna keep it?
We wanna keep it, yeah. Um, and this is something that if, if we could, if it would work, that would be great. I had talked to Tim about. If you. This is the side door here. This is where that very awkward and dangerous stairway is that goes from this room upstairs down. If you start it further toward where the chimney is, or even take the chimney down to. The floor level, cause it's not a functional thing, and we've removed it from the roof anyway, or maybe we did the roof. If you start the stairway here, if you get down under the eaves and go down and get out and you're right by. This door. And what Stan said. When he met with us here was that, um. There's fire rated sheet rock that's rated for an hour. And if, depending on the use of the second floor, uh, phase, whatever. If you use, if you enclose this stairway with. Fire rated material. This exit here can become your fire exit for the second floor and you don't have to build this whole big thing over here. Um, he said he'd work on that, but then he got orders that everything was done. It doesn't have to be done now, but that I think is, I think it's solvable.
And everything leading to that also needs to be fire rated, everything leading to that.
Yeah, up here, it has to be closed all the way down.
Right, what I'm saying, even leading to it and it's in an attic, which is not fire rated. So it's, it's more than just enclosing the stairwell.
Well, everything here. Is not.
It's an exit, so the fire code when it's an exit.
Well, this, this, this would be an exit too.
Yeah, I know, but my point is, the reason why they were talking about it being more complicated is because.
Yes, sir.
You know, leading to from areas that are in use. It needs to be, you need to be able to have a safe exit out, it needs to be all fire rated. So that's why it's more complicated.
Well, it, I mean, that's, that's for investigation later, so we're not doing anything with set up for a space anyway. But that's just something that they said they'd work on. I mean, I don't really know why it's any different from like. Being here and having to get all the way around here and out here. Not a whole.
Because your exit is right here. You know, if you have a longer path to get to an exit, it's my point, cause this is an attic, this is not fire rated at all.
Anyway, let's forget this, that's, that's also grand, that's number five on the list. The only things right now that were priorities for us were. Location of the kitchenette. Keeping this petition and having that little coat closet or something there. Losing this wall and putting a bifold so that you can divide if you want to, but you don't have two rooms with a door. And keeping this door here. Um, anyway, so we were surprised that. You know, everything was done, finished because we had had instructions to go over and do this. And Glenn said that if there was a special meeting, but it had already been noticed and it was. We couldn't get on the agenda for that, so we were waiting for this meeting to go over this with you. Before we provided the information to Silver Peach Chilling. And my goal was to have a finished drawing, at least for the first floor. We put it on a screen when there's a meeting and you could present it to public as this is what our plan is. But now we have a drawing that doesn't even have any kitchenette anywhere. And, and, you know. It has other things like two little tiny rooms that don't make a lot of sense in the back. Um. I don't know, I mean, normally. When an architectural firm gives a proposal to somebody, they present a plan, they go over it, you know, they talk over the plan and then you make some adjustments. But they gave us a big plan that we never had a chance to respond to.
We asked them.
Yeah.
We, we had asked them to do that, we gave them direction to open, to label things, meeting rooms instead of office space.
Well, but that was, but you, you asked them to do that before you had input from Task Force.
Well, we needed some.
Yeah.
Well, the meeting we had at Stan, you know, had both said, you, you can't designate that anything else but meeting space. Um, and he gave the explanation of the, the fifty or less personnel gathering and so on. And, and we had no other use for that, when he started the office space, there was different criteria. So that's why we started having, actually into label, uh, the first floor and then the upstairs, cause you made this recommendation.
Yeah.
Currently, um. The actual term was, it was like currently being used for.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Anyways, um, but.
But they, but we, I mean, they did get, you know. Joyce probably conveyed the change of labeling from office space to meeting and work space or whatever. But in addition to the labeling. We never got, we don't have a kitchen in it. And we don't, didn't have an opportunity to say, now that this isn't a kitchen, we don't have that wall in it. So I don't know where things stand, but I wanted to try to save potential money and not go back to them and ask them. To make changes after they've received an approval, this is done and finished, cause. Nobody got our input, we were waiting for this meeting.
Well, our.
Two of writers on the.
I think that will be, yeah, or used for repairs, all that, that, has that been done?
Well, I also have. I think I. I'll have to get it to.
Very impressive.
Okay, yeah, so this is, the list from a lot of actions that are anything that.
Yes.
Uh, I need one.
Yeah. Your permission.
Yeah. Yeah, I hope they can. I don't need some of this. Yeah. Um. That, uh. Since our last meeting. I got proposals from two different testing. To test for asbestos. In the plaster interior and also for, um. And then you finished with the interior and exterior, so should I give these to yours?
Yeah.
Yeah, the one. I actually prefer the one that's less expensive. I think it's, the other one is, so Biggie's would be my, that, but I, I'm giving you both of them because. We wanna get this done, done as quickly as possible, so that we can get some repairs done to them. And, um. Uh, I also met with carpenter contractor. Who is licensed and insured and highly recommended by his contractor that I know pretty well. Uh, I met with him and he was giving us proposal there. Uh, doing some work that he, he said he can start in June. He has been, um. Called by to, to work with. Plastics materials. Uh, he has to recertify in June. So, yeah, so, um, he can't do. You know, anything that's paint or plaster removal until we get the results of the tests. But if.
How quickly do they?
They can do it quickly as, as.
And they're redoing his asbestos iron lead with the same company.
Yeah, okay, they do both. Yeah, uh, they will let paint, they is interior, exterior. The asbestos concern is in the plaster, which I was really surprised to learn that way back centuries. They put asbestos in plaster as a binder. So in historic buildings, you have to do plaster testing. To see if there's asbestos or whatever.
But do you have to if you're not gonna touch them?
Certainly, no.
Well, we're gonna touch the plaster, redo the bathroom, we're gonna touch the, re-touch.
Cause like in the schools, they've, they've sort of encapsulated.
Well, you can, if you're not removing a wall, you can encapsulate it with a particular kind of paint. But they need to know if asbestos is there, cause then they specify asbestos binding, whatever, you know, this particular paint. So I would love to get. This room painted. Where are we? The main, yeah, the, the main room where, um. These walls are disgusting was, you know, just. It's excellent from this, 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 the swallows that used to live above.
But would we also run the test for this area, where we're gonna.
They're gonna.
Eventually do the work.
They're gonna do six or seven.
Okay.
Tests, they do live in different places, they'll pick the places and they do, you know, random tests around the building too.
Okay. It's pretty, and how much of the, of the quotes?
The quotes, um, Biggie's, which is the one I like the best, eleven forty five. And the other ones, they're not available on a tiny basis. The other one is. Thirteen thirty. And the, the contractor that I've talked to. You know, well, he can start on a couple of things. That don't require, you know, that involves the, the. Potential asbestos, so that he, he can start and work on this portion, which has this, you know, really. Lovely, the most profitable to begin with. And he's also put in prices for the windows on Maple Street and left top floor are really in bad condition. And Tim said that the. The trim can be done and the sills replaced with mahogany. And, and that can be done whether or not we're replacing sashes at a later date. So that would be a good thing to do. And the corner boards in a lot of areas on the outside have been patched and they're robbing. And in bad condition, so he had that on his list too. This is labor and materials for, for those things.
Would this be painting or we'd have to hire somebody else to do the painting?
We probably had her somebody else to do the painting. And he would, he would replace the, the corner boards with boron.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we're just, it's a really good material, I've done some of that in my home house and I'm very impressed with it. I think it was your brother-in-law.
Probably, he's invited, yeah.
Yeah, he, he was one of the first people that I met with when I started working on Swift House. And that was his recommendation.
Can we contract with the painter and then it comes out of this year's budget? Yeah, can't, doesn't work that way, you have to actually spend the money.
Well, what, um, the pressure said if you have a contract.
Door has to be at least started or almost, I mean, if, if there's a day or two that they're gonna go over fine, but they can't have that and it's started, it was just a contract in hand.
Yeah.
Have you, did you guys price, I'm sorry to be too blunt, but did you guys price gutters? Because if you don't put in here the building and you don't put gutters up, it's just gonna continue with the, with those sills rotting. And they were kicking out.
I don't think the gutters are the windows, because we, we, we extended the eaves when the roof was done. So I don't think that's a problem for the.
Okay, just.
Second floor windows. Yeah. I mean, there are gutters in areas where one roof goes down to another. Um, like in the back on the west side.
How about the wrong?
Yeah, but the ones that were there on the front were way too small.
Right.
And detached, so, yeah. Yeah. Anyway. Um, so so how so how do we handle this, so it's a little patchy, tell right?
Well, they're done, right?
Yeah, they're done, so um, but. There's suggestions, recommendations for if we do follow on charging plans. That's fine, I mean, I don't think, strictly you're not, you're not talking, as you won't bury, if you're talking about your cosmetics and your walls or not walls. So and as your your installation, your pitch map, I'm talking about major two-twenty lines and things like that, he he put in.
But what I wanted us to have is a drawing that we could show people and say, this is what we're trying to do, we don't have a. I mean, these little things, I would wanna take this out. And I would want people to know that we're gonna have a ditch of that.
Could we go back to them and say, how much would you charge for us to do this?
Yeah, there was a miscommunication, there's just, you know, I mean, it won't take them.
I can imagine it would be that much money.
It won't take them that long.
It's having your budget, we, it's there, we don't have additional budget money for that, but.
I mean, you take away some repairs.
Yeah, they take away some. Yeah, they take away some. But that's definitely in saying, um, and I'm sure Barbara's probably gonna find out.
She love it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I mean, even if we spent the money and then we had to do some kind of a transfer. Um, where is the, where is the?
The money for it is in the maintenance line anyway, so if you extended more money, it is within the operating budget, and so if you extended more money, it would just reduce some of the, I don't know, the carpenter re uh estimate.
Oh, okay. Okay. So, yeah, I have one for you. So.
Yeah, yeah, well, I.
There's still plenty of money in that.
Yeah.
It's too much.
Like I'm thinking, I don't know exactly much.
It wasn't, it was like fifteen thousand.
It was, yeah, yeah, in total, which you have, is that for total for this and the other one, uh, is it?
Uh, the testing is eleven forty-five.
Okay, then just.
And this one's, yeah, and there's more money than that.
And you have more money for next year, right, so P D could come actually come up.
Yeah. Yeah.
No, 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 I was just thinking, I have a.
I don't know, but if if it costs a couple thousand, maybe.
I'm gonna do, you know, like, what, the corner boards are up, you can come and do the corner boards and maybe he could do the living room and his contract could say. This is what I'm gonna do. And he could start with the corner boards and then come back to the. As long as there's a contract, right? Uh, what I mean.
We can separate contracts, okay.
The work has to be very almost completed in order for it to be paid out in this fiscal year. You can't just decide, let's say we can, we sign an access, we agree to this work, we, it's not a punch list where if he does two of the things, we're gonna pay him into. Totality, we're all hand to hand for the two things that were done, if he didn't get them because. He hasn't even started them before that ended fiscal year, we're not gonna, it's gonna have to go towards the next fiscal year.
But why, then why do things, why does it take so long for Barbara to actually?
That's.
Round out the year, I mean, she's not.
Well, I was waiting to July, you know, sometimes it's really obvious.
Those do take time, even other, the single bills, like you know, your electric bill and other bills that do take time to come in, go through the process of, you know, being entered and paid and submitted, so I I'm sure there's a lot of time with the. Regular bills, but in a contract like this, or even if we order something, we may not get the actual um invoice until thirty days after we've purchased something, you know, purchases it within the time frame.
Yeah, but sometimes. But you know, what I understood her to say earlier this evening was. You know, if you have a contract and it's signed and the work has begun, it's in that in that calendar year, it's like you write a check. And you mail it to somebody and if they don't, you know, if it's written and in the mail, it's a commitment.
Are you talking about the question I asked her about the art of that? Cause that was specific, that's different, yes.
Oh, art, that's different, yes. Yeah, that's a very specific bucket of money, you know, and the regular standard operating.
Yeah. Your obligation, execution.
She has to go to the year, and so we have to make sure that the work is done, we can't have project, I mean, that's part of the reason.
But you know, because in construction, a lot of work begins in the spring and continues on during. And it goes to the fiscal year, this.
Yeah, certainly.
Yeah, but I mean, you'll be able to do your work with a checklist and say, you've done this and this and.
And that has to get paid for, you know, get paid for the whole contract.
Yeah, the challenge.
No, I'm not talking about paying for it, I'm talking about. Having a commitment, cause the commitment is the important.
Well, let's let's get some clarification from Barbara, make sure that we're.
Yeah, well, you can have a commitment, because part of your charge was to also come up with what work would be done next fiscal year's operating budget, if I recall, so if. If you decide as a subcommittee that that's the work that you want done.
Yeah.
You have that budget number that you're working with to make a commitment, we're not gonna obviously pay him until he does the work, but if you wanna commit because. He's so busy or, you know, he's scheduling time, you can commit with her to do it, but we're not gonna pay. But yeah, you can make it.
No, I'm not talking about paying him, I'm talking about.
Right. Then you can make the commitment with her because you're.
We're we're. She's the.
Okay. I mean, I I just. But the reality is, we're really.
And we did that before with yours, with your test, you know, I mean, they start the roof in. June, but.
That was a twenty-two. The roof was from um.
Family.
Old rocks, yes, so that wasn't operating, but it's great, yeah, that was a special fund, so when it's special funds, it's a little bit different.
Well, the the construction, it's always better go over.
Well, I I think I I think it makes sense to go back to them and say. You know, could they make these small changes, how much is it gonna cost us?
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
But maybe so, maybe it's.
It's more.
I have five hundred dollars. Yeah, I can, I can give them these over the phone or send them the tissue over, like, and he can, you know, work from that or whatever, but I I think there. I think it would be good to have a drawing that we can show people.
Okay, I can agree that.
I don't agree with you, because he's embarrassed, we haven't sold.
That's, yeah, big business.
The stamps is a.
Yeah, there was an if possible.
It's, that's an if possible. He said he worked on it, but he was.
That's the next step.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, just with your, um. If you, sorry, I'm just heard, if this is what you want to report some of your operating budget for this year to get that done, um, call them, call, see if they'll do it, so you you just, you know, have to, again, amend what you're looking to do.
But don't you want, do you wanna go in through Joyce or Ma?
Yeah, yeah, no, but I'm saying, but as a board, as the task force, this is where they wanna recommend to us to to actually have a rendering.
Well, first of all, do you agree with these changes?
I I really don't have an issue, uh, yeah, I mean, kitchen, I understand about the the byfold doors, I like that, that's fine, and and yeah, that's, those are all. More, yeah.
Their problems, since the somewhat of it is not required, yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine. What?
I'm fine with it except for stairs.
Right, we'll talk, we'll take everything down.
Everything else is great.
One to four.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna argue that.
Change, all that changes.
Okay, do you want to motion about these changes, since it's different than what we approved?
Motion accepts the recommendation for change of one to four.
One through four, not including five.
Yes. Yeah.
Not including one.
I'll second that.
Okay, any more discussion?
Not for this. The only other thing that I wanted to ask you about.
Wait, before we get, so, yeah, so we have agreed to this, right? Now we have, so who's talking to Tim, who's talking to Swift House?
Well, can I convey this to Tim?
Well, that's what we're asking right now, what's what the, if the coordinate.
Yes, do you wanna tell Tim that I'll call him when the changes?
Or is it?
And then and then find out how much it's gonna cost.
He wants me to know how much it's gonna cost, he knows what the changes is.
Right.
I know, but I'm just saying, we wanna, we wanna process that quickly, we don't want that going into July.
And then just pinch up.
Maybe we can make that too.
Be ready for these meetings, so we're good with, and then back to Ben, then.
Oh, and then you remind you these?
Well, whatever, it's gonna throw back and relook at cost wise, all that stuff, but I'm I'm okay with having, right, authorize them to.
Spend the budget.
Spend the budget.
Okay.
Right, at this point, or that, and then these. These areas.
I don't work in the facts, I don't remember.
You guys vote, uh, we didn't vote on every little.
Okay.
It was, there's budget and this is what we're trying to do, and Joyce and I work together with contractors and. Should do contracts for them so that I get all the insurance and. Whatever, and troubles needed.
I mean, e- even like with the Big East, I have no problem, I mean, you've already spoken to Ben Zan, so if that's something that the board authorizes you to do, I I have no problem stepping back, and I mean, you already have a relationship with that, I'm happy to do it. But I also don't want a third person coming in, delaying the process or whatever, so if you guys authorize that, you do.
Yeah, but you, you know, I don't know if you need. You know, insurance or licenses or whatever.
I mean, these aren't.
It should be all those, but we actually brought it.
So do you want us to approve these? Or?
That's a key. Well, I mean, their their their. Their motion was to come up with the list and 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 to actually even find the contractors and that sort of stuff, so now it's just a matter of semantics, I mean, you don't, I mean, board assignment doesn't necessarily. Need to approve, what if it's set down an operating budget, unless you're giving the task force the authorization to move forward with handling the facilitation of. You know.
But if you're, if you're gonna handle the facilitation.
Then then you have the option, then it just, you know, we're being.
I can handle it.
Yeah, it's what, you know, it's.
So, so.
If we're with Zan, so everybody's talking.
Well, sure, I mean, I'm happy to share whatever. The next.
Oh, we have to, I'll 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 leave people tomorrow and then I'll be back up to you, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the the carpenter would be happy to have you if you have a format for a contract.
Okay.
Um. And I'll put him in touch with you.
Okay.
Yeah. And then we'll find out if Barbara, if. This, because he's not gonna be. Certified to work with Glenn Payne, I mean, he won't get his recertification until June.
Okay.
So hopefully we can get that.
It's just a bad negative.
Yeah, there you go.
That's that's a question.
I I think it's, I think it's likely, because it was nineteen seventy-eight that the law changed, and I think most of this work was done on the exterior of the building. In the early seventies, when the town acquired and then Samuel.
Maybe like chewing chewing on, I'm like also like paying my kids, so I get it off and offering it to my brother.
Yeah.
Brother.
So the other thing I want to ask you about all were in the Swift House. Subject matter. I had in anticipation of, I don't have no idea what time it is and, you know, and I I would love to have at least the ADA. Work could be considered for a steep grant. Um, does the steep grant require that you fund from the town? Yeah, so that would be well. So if you're told that. People could use it. Um. And then raise money for the. The other work that needs to be done. But without, without an entrance in the bathroom. You know, it's just, it's town asset that's sitting there empty, nothing out of use. Uh, but I I'd love to be able to, you know, I'm sorry if we cross paths on this. Part of our charges, I said, and I know to you, has always been to. Help determine future uses of the building, so that plans can be done and people can be involved and enthusiastic. And, um. I had wanted to be able to, for example, take maps. And maybe you would wanna go too, since you're on Parks and Rec, and he's never seen the building, have him take a look at it and think about. The kinds of programs he might do there for adults, for children, you know, for, I was in an exercise class that the community has. That had very few people, the last other people, um, Parks and Rec director. Because he priced them so. In such a different way that people signed up for the less expensive and he priced this class I was in. Uh, quite a bit more, and there weren't a lot of members. And. You know, to have, to turn the heat on for an hour-long class. For half a dozen people in a huge space, doesn't make sense if it could be in a building that's already heated. Or the bridge, for example, is at the senior center, and senior center is specifically for seniors. There might be somebody who's forty-five and wants to play bridge too. And I think a lot of people, myself included. Don't wanna just segregate ourselves with elderly. You know, half of my friends are way younger than I am. And it would be nice to be able to have a facility where it could be used by different age groups and different kinds of activities. Um. But I don't wanna get sculpted for, I I haven't taken anyone in the building. Only walked around the perimeter, the only time I've been in the building was with the full Swift House task force at a meeting. But it would be nice to be able to meet with, like, the garden club and see what their use of that space is while we're working on the land. Maybe they would like to have in the future, they've had. Lectures and speakers and programs, and I would imagine that they might like to do it where they consider their home to be. Is it okay if I check with you or Joyce or somebody or Glenn and say, I'd like to take somebody from Parks and Rec so they can see the building and just think about it?
Um.
Cause how do you, how do you promote? Work to be done to restore this building? When you don't have. An enthusiasm from different groups.
That's a, that's a good, that's a good question, that's a good point, and I think part, what I would like to see next. Part of this is a open information session, people in town, whose organizations or individuals find out exactly what it is that's been going on with Swift House for the past couple of years and and what the. Task force has looked at, we've looked at, what the plans are and so on, and then also funding issue, that's gonna be a big part, we don't, uh, some budget people are gonna be concerned about. The investment, so and and the use and so on, and so I think part of that is that instead of segmenting everything individually. Of this formal housing and little garden, a little here, that it really needs to to bring everybody together, get them up to speed with what's been going on so far, have an information session. I would like to see that, and then have that open discussion, and then people say, well, hey, you know, I'd like to take a look at it, I'd like to do it, and then maybe have some more. Specifically formal presentations, walkthroughs and so on, and then give them the whole background of what's been going on, uh, you know, what we've been doing with the architects. And so on, some recommendations, again, showing the the plan, I'm thinking a lot, and then, this is all, yeah, they do that. In generating some discussion.
There's a couple of people, for example, who have said it would be wonderful to have like a wee workspace there. And maybe the room, the the chamber that's only been used for storage. Could be that. But they'd like to see this place in the building they've never been in. Um, you know, is it not possible to? Check in with somebody and say, well, you know. They're not gonna discuss and. With an idea. Unless they can think about the space.
Correct, as I said, but I think we need to bring people up to speed on where we come, what we're looking at, what the plans are, what the task force has been doing. Answer any general questions, and at that point, um. Yeah, then then invite people in or look at at specific opportunities to have people in, but bringing people in before they really have an idea, have a garden club which approached me once just to use bits of store stuff. Um, to have the, both Lynn and I, uh, in competition with the, it has been a collegial, uh, informal way with the Chamber of Commerce, they were thinking of using this, I asked them at the end of the day, and he's like, yeah, maybe, I don't know. Um, so, but understand what we take, what we're looking at doing, what the the downstairs would look like with with renderings and so on for the architects. Um, you know, kitchen have things, that kind of presentation, and then the associated costs, I think they can't really hide all that, need to go into a discussion and then. Again, have people think, well, what what are we doing, what are we going to be a landlord? Uh, you know, actually, just, shouldn't I get them a little, it's my personal feeling on this, but we're being a landlord, are we gonna have part of the building? Part of the building.
Oh, by the way, I saved you a lot of time, because there's no money, that kind of of, uh, no state money. That kind of workforce housing at this point, one of the things that Justin really wants to try to do if he gets elected. Is to get the state to be more sensitive to rural areas like Kent, where people don't want just big apartment buildings for. Affordable housing, they wanna have auxiliary, you know, they wanna have some funds available for, what do they call them, auxiliary.
It is.
Accessory, accessory dwellings, or a place like Swift House where there could be one apartment or, you know. Place that was sold on Main Street that's been vacant for the last two years. Place that was sold on Main Street that's been vacant for the last two years. And there used to be two apartments up there on the second floor. There's nothing happening.
Yeah.
They're not very close. Yeah.
Country, right?
Yeah.
Yes. So what if we do this? I like this idea. We modify when we get this, if we can get that modified.
We can. It's just gonna cost money. Yeah. It's not an if.
If we can. If we can. Let's 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 do that. We meet as a task force at some point coming up here. We talk about this, like, you know, this is okay. I mean, it goes a little beyond our. Our charge here, but you know, we talk about this idea that we're going to have an open house or something, whatever you wanna call it, informational session at the Swift House. I don't know if fifty people can come in at this point, but at least. It's clean. It's yeah, so it's, you know, we can't do it right.
But 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 you know, showed up on the screen, shown here.
But. Oh, we're all ready. Yeah, I was saying that it could be here. Yeah, it could be. Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's it's like a presentation.
At some point.
To to the town. This is what we've done. This is this this is how much A V N C is gonna cost. But we do it all together. We're all in the loop and it's clean. I like that.
Yeah, how are we gonna figure out the cost? Because can we like pick and choose from their estimations? I mean, because there's a lot more in here than we don't need to include if we're just showing the ADA.
Yeah. Well, I think what we talked about was ADA and maybe kitchenette. So that there's a functional space when you open it again.
But then if we're including the kitchenette, then they have to change the chart. It's not just the plan.
We don't, we can, we can do our own chart based on the figures that they're giving us.
We can put things in. Yeah, and that's what I mean. That's what I'm wondering is can we, can we pick and choose? Because I just wanna show people, this is how much it's gonna cost to get the building open.
That's what I was saying a long time ago.
Yeah, I know.
But you have one another. They said once you put the bathroom in, it raises to a certain level, which triggers ADA, meaning we have to open the doorways, we have to level the floors. So it's not just. The cost of the the ramp and the bathroom.
I know, that's why I really wanted to know of that. I wanted to know plan, you know, what.
It has to be a plan. They, I believe that they did list those things, cause they brought it to, I think it's like a level two. I forget off, I've been through it so many times. But I think it brings it like to a level two mandate for ADA, where you have to do. More than just with the bathroom in. You have to, like you said, I know doorways for sure and the doorways, but like the lights need to be loved, switches need to be accessible. It triggers all of those ancillary, that ancillary work as well.
But but according to. This lady says with who was an ADA compliance officer.
Yeah, but they're not, they didn't agree with us about the basis.
Well, then it's. If it's on the plan and it's. I mean, this would need to be opened up. I think that's fine. That's, you know. And this needs to be opened up.
I just don't know how we estimate, how we put the estimates forward. I don't understand that.
And this is. Yeah.
Yeah. Unless we get. Uh, Joe, Joe and your man may be back to say what.
No, Joe's not gonna get asked with it.
That's not.
No, no, I'm taking the specifics. What he's saying for for building codes and stuff uh in in.
It's not his thing.
He's not an ADA compliance person.
No, and compliance is all also, you know, we done for the the negative, you know, but um but yes.
Yeah.
I'm just worried about that. Because what they gave us is not easy. To parse out. Like Joyce was just talking about. And I don't really wanna show this whole thing to everybody because I don't think it actually represents what we wanna do. I don't either.
No.
Well, see, I'm not sure it doesn't represent what actually has to be done. You know, trying to do bits and pieces, just open up a ramp and a bathroom. I think people are gonna wanna be in that room with uneven floors, rusted ceilings, you know.
No, I mean, you know, there must be, there is money in the budget for some cleaning out and painting.
Yeah, right. And that's what we're here for, you know, to kind of get done with.
But, you know, this opening. Would be important and they're also talking about taking that wall. At these walls.
Maybe we need to actually have a carpenter or a couple carpenters give us quotes.
Yeah. I think that's a very good idea.
Because those, that's how we really know how much it's gonna cost. This is just an estimation anyway.
Right.
Yeah. So and includes a lot of things that we may never do. Or not want to do. Or do it a later.
And the sort task task force should do that. I mean, could they?
That's what we've done in the past.
Yeah. I would say get three quotes.
Get the three people to pay attention at this time. I'm just thinking it's it's good.
Yeah.
Have we done that past?
Yeah.
Hey, listen, um, yeah, I think that, yeah. Concern with the cost compared to what in 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 real functionality compared to what else is available in the town, including a library, potential alley, the, you know, community health, get that up. And and others, the schools and town ball itself, which overall, I mean. Might give us more flexibility, more capability again. My concern if a taxpayer is as first in like, but is we're building a building for. Non-government use, anybody else to use it, why are we doing it? Why don't we turn it over to a civilian and have them do it? And, you know, turn, keep it in the historical perspective, the issue with that, I'd like to bear time with that. Um. But why is a town going to know all that to turn it over to?
Well, maybe because the town doesn't have a lot of property and it might need to build it.
For what though?
Well, you could put offices, you could do.
I mean.
Well, I'd yeah, like to get this place up to speed. We could put it for less than the bottom that would do that complete thing, put office in, or not put anybody in there at a fair situation. Unless we had everything up to speed, but putting in an addition off here for an additional office or two. Probably would cost less than, we're close to that amount. Uh, but I mean, there's, we don't use a school as well as we should for activities. Like to have a, you know, an activity there, we do that, you know.
It's part of the business of security school.
Yeah.
Well, I mean.
Basketball, we have uh programs, we have.
No, but that's one of the school children.
And we have adults there as well. But I'm saying, if you're gonna use it as adults, we have, you know, board meetings are held there with adults. And we just wondered, I don't, I don't, as a school or or a school chair, I don't think anybody used it as much as we could.
I mean, we, I'm on the town democratic committee. We used to have our meetings in this building all the time upstairs. There are new rooms upstairs. I mean, where everything is occupied because the town really leans towards.
No, that's true. We can open up the room. We open up the room upstairs, um, by rearranging offices and taking junk out. So we can actually have a second meeting room. Uh, eventually you get a Zoom room up there as well. So you could have a meeting in that when we set to put a door on that.
Yeah, it's, no, I was talking about the room at the end of the hall, which is have a registrar's office.
Right.
Yeah. Just get another twenty five members.
But you could use this room, I mean.
Well, this room is available. Anyway.
But we can go around and work around whether or not the Swift House is a legitimate. Property or an asset for the town.
Right.
We have, we have survey data that says people think we should hold on to it and we should.
All right. I have to quote office. The survey data is old. It's not under the concept of what's actually occurred reality wise here. So I think if we go to anything else, it'd have to be a referendum to be really understand, take their time and vote and decide where the town wants to go, especially that kind of. For long term, not just to get up to ADA, but to continue to use it, continue to maintain it, to expand it, to use, you know, more than just that that center area if you're gonna do anything with the upstairs. You can't do it, and I agree with you saying this one, you can't leave it un. Unused, you can't leave it unplanned for if you're gonna have it at this whole point. And I think at that point, we need to, I'd like to, you know, again. As as. Plain and open as possible, give them some idea of what you guys have been doing with the task force and what the the architects have done and has conceptual ideas what to do with it. Um, start, you know, if there's a buzz out there for, hey, you know, yeah, there's some ideas, I like to look at what those ideas are. Again, regenerate that because if it comes, it's all non-millennial use. I mean, we could look at it for offices, we could look at it park, I don't, you know, that's.
Well, I think Park and Rec could use it for a lot of things.
Well, I also think Park and Rec should be in the elementary school.
And I would go. Out what?
Think Park and Rec should be in the elementary school with student, the percentage of the numbers of the.
Well, the the biggest concern about Park and Rec at this point in their survey. The only thing they're really lacking is adult program. That's the the negative that they've had in feedback for a recent survey that they did. This is a perfect place for adult programming. Not in the school where the school children are at the daytime.
Well, in nighttime, but adult program, you're talking about mostly at nighttime, correct?
It doesn't, not at all, not at all.
It could be a weekend, yeah, it could be anytime.
Right, the school could use their weekends. I mean, it's an asset that we don't, that we already have and we put my into.
But I I understand where you're coming from with the school, but the school does not make it easy. You know, they don't make it easy for Park and Rec to use this, the property. So.
Can I, it's it's, um, yeah, it's kind of, it's it's in my report, but I think it's time to say this now. Um, this happened Monday. Um, you know, Marina hadn't gotten back to me for like over a month and I said, okay, let's go, I'm gonna try one more time, knowing we had this meeting. If she got back, we can continue within like an hour, which is amazing. And it's very short and thank you, it's in the hoop hoop, if anyone wanna read it. Uh, but I think this is really important. Hi Glenn, apologies for the delay. Quick version, the national registry coordinator agreed that the Swift House is eligible for the national register. I've put together a longer email that includes our initial comments and other potential funding sources for you. That's Marina. So good news, thank you so much for your email for this great news. I'll have this in my report at the B O S meeting on Wednesday. Keep in touch and ask for your help. She wrote, a pleasure. So, okay, this doesn't mean much. I mean, who knows, we're on the state registry, I mean, no less than national registry. But she talked to a na- national registry coordinator who said they were eligible. I didn't give us any chance whatsoever of getting all that. That's hard to do. And she said that to me the first time I talked, I talked with her and I talked to other people in other towns about this. That's hard to get on. Even if we have a chance. So so in my board report, I just threw down like, you know, grants and federal, you know, monies, whatever, I don't, I just went down the rabbit hole. Um, you know, we're probably not even close to that. Who knows what the, what what's what's the procedure? How long will it be? Who knows? But that's the greatest thing I've heard about this since I've been doing this. Like, that's amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, the fact that we're probably going to be on the state registry and we have a possibility of being on the national registry. And I know people who have gotten federal funding for national uh buildings. I know this. Talked to them and they said it's, there's money out there, you can do it. Like it's it's, so so I've literally been looking at like grants and asking people like who are grant writers. So tonight I was gonna ask. Who's our resident grant writer? Where are we going? So I'm 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 preparing for a huge event. And it could be really good news now. It could come tomorrow, it could come one through now, two months, who knows? This is a slow process. I think we've been, you've been doing this longer than I have. I've been doing this.
It's my interest.
This is not gonna happen fast or easily or quickly.
Yeah.
But it's moving in the right direction. We're talking. And this hasn't happened since we've had the Swift House ever, as far as I know. Is that right?
Right.
This is, I mean, I mean, we.
It's really, it's actually one.
So we need to run with this because we need to get grant funding. That is the main way we're gonna pay for any and all of this for grabs.
And then the and the national funding, if we forget that.
So. So like. You just say that, so.
National funding gonna pay for the match for the state funding.
So let's, let's.
So this is really, really good news.
Let's take care of this, let's take care of that, let's meet as a Swift House subcommittee and talk about a possible presentation to the town. And keep the conversation going because literally this this could go on for another hour. Yeah, I think we got it. We just wrapped it up. Yep. If that's okay. I'm sorry, I'm just.
No, I mean, and and in the meantime, Marty, think about whether it would be possible. To bring a couple select people who've shown enthusiasm and never seen the inside of this house. To see it because that's how you get excited. That's how you think about ideas for use. Um, and. Bringing it from just a vibrant to a reality.
Who is the seller?
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for listening.
Nice work. Nice work. I'm moving this forward. I mean, so I have stuff if that one.
Yeah.
So we can do that later.
It's a last.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Right.
Thanks, Joyce.
And Joyce will be in touch.
Okay.
As a trooper, I think you guys saw, I had a phenomenal job again, you know.
Yeah.
Every time I turn around, she stops somebody, if we're both.
I I've said before, I'll say again, a lot of people just commented on the great job she's doing and. Well, it's, it's all against.
We're done. Great, I mean, uh. May it to. It's a. It's really obvious.
Yeah, she was really good with the kids. Yeah. And.
Um.
And it was awesome with the. Well, I thought that was so great and he had all kinds of supplies, so.
Yes, we do that. Yeah. Yeah, they're doing a good job. They're ordering everything. They're, they're, they're. Um, yeah, uh, okay, so. Questions out there, uh, select reports.
I just wonder with the um, the traffic control stuff.
Yes.
Do we have to vote on anything?
Yeah, well, there's been orders, there's gonna be whole orders aside.
But is there a cost or not, no cost for?
No, but no cost for it. No cost for it.
Oh.
No, we we talked to traffic logic. It's it's uh the same same system the state uses at times, but you stand the rubber, bopper across the road.
Uh huh.
Uh, it's now all wider, uh, wider. So, um, no cost whatsoever. Um, we're going to share it with the other towns or in Washington. We get to keep it.
So it's gonna move the ramp.
Yeah, and it's not a hole in in racing. Right on North Bay right now. So I don't know if I think that conservation, we're gonna move it after this weekend. We can break it.
Yeah, it's almost three hundred and fifty four.
All right, after this weekend, we'll move it down to the other one, uh, before we, yeah.
And over there.
You're gonna move it like south, so.
No, yeah, we're gonna be south. Yeah, can we get? We can move that. Now, you know, if I just stop a pole, we can move it down there. Tomorrow, Friday, right?
Yeah, we'll see. I mean, I remember Starman, the whole.
Yeah.
Be bad tomorrow.
Okay, but if we can't, that's right. We're gonna move it down there to catch the. Where the traffic and and well.
Like on the South Main Street.
Yeah.
Good, but she'll get some very high numbers there.
Oh, yeah. Last night about ten thirty like that. And then I also like to put out this, just to check, because she has stopped people over two different occasions. We're going very fast going through stop signs. Well, the more than hell of a stop sign, but just. Fifteen is a, you know.
It's hard if it's hard. There's a work ethic when I'm on a little street.
It's hard. Yeah, I could ride my bike down and it's seventeen, eighteen a month. Anyways.
But I'm really glad you're working on it. I was like, how can we get this without any money? Pretty good, Marty.
Yeah, we're. Exactly, yeah, we did. Actually, we, you know, because we're potential customers, so we kind of get that thing, so. We have a security campus, um. And I mentioned all those procedures, man, that was a real thing that, it wasn't in our report, but we could talk about, we're really gonna have, we're gonna have a name where we just. Nothing but put down here, lay it all out, just can't figure out how we go forward, what we need to do.
Yeah, like even even there, when you were talking about, you know, the ninety days for Matt. There's nothing in there.
Yeah.
About what, what.
It's specifics, I know.
And there's no specifics. Like, what are you reviewing?
Yeah, yeah. Well, like you said, you, we'd like to do a great job.
I know, but we meant that it's.
It does, it does have to be.
But and and you told me that that there's actually, I don't know if there's fees for this or what, there's people at C C M that actually help guide for that.
Absolutely. And we did it in Cape. We did the same thing with that with the support, but then we actually contracted to come down.
Yeah. Yeah.
C C M, I took their conference and it's one of the people that look at. Uh, that cost and the cave, bar cost and C C M, both there. Something I think C C M is more, um, actually helping.
They have a training center dedicated to that.
Exactly. Um, the only thing I want to point out is is can find our, apparently they weren't even discussing with that, most areas. If there's anything else.
Yeah, I saw that.
Um, you think that we could have a discussion or specifics, you know, we could have a meeting.
I I thought what you had in there was good. I do think we need, we need to nail down more data.
Yeah.
We need to know how much. And I tried getting them to talk about this fast, but like how much? How many calls? How many calls? Give us a breakdown. How many calls are going to need to be in schools? Which ones? How many calls are going to be bi watch?
Did it?
Um, all that, we need more data and we need it in like a year, for two years, for about three years. Add it, just to pull it.
Yeah. Yeah, there's a lot of things that's falling.
Yeah.
It'll be more.
But, you know, and then the other thing is. You know, how much are we using the paramedic, the neophyte paramedic? How much are we using Duchess Kennedy? Um, we're paying a lot of money for the neophyte paramedic now. So.
Wrong, yeah, it's wrong. We should do, we need to open up to our books a little bit more. We don't have.
And then they're like, they've never been forthcoming with how much money to bring it in on the bill and. So. Well, it's owing to their budget. I mean, they have huge. Well, it's owing to their budget, I mean, they have huge expenses, I have no doubt that there's, you know, they have huge expenses, everything costs.
Yeah. Yeah.
Double, triple, four times more than what it will cost for you and I to buy something. You know, the cost of turning here is just insane now.
No, I know, we know, right, correct, yeah.
Um. But they they need to be more forthcoming with it, especially when it's, anything related to EMS now.
Well, it's.
And I don't know what, if Barbara got answers to all her questions, but I mean, in, you know, the fact that.
Yeah, we're gonna miss it, yeah.
The uh. Contract doesn't match up with the amount of money that we're paying per hour, I I don't get that, and it's like, somebody needs to answer that.
Perfect, exactly, now, that we did, and that's what we want to move, we're setting down, we're gonna ask for that accounting, specifically. And we're gonna work out between Alan, John and myself, I hope, um, how we actually have that breaking out, and when we're gonna actually get that data, specifics. The real answer is not like, okay, we're gonna work it out later, we're concerned too right now.
Yeah. There must be deadline.
Yeah, exactly.
Within three months, or something like that.
Yeah, I think we move by the July, into July, I mean, we'll work with them on that, but but certainly, we need to have the data if we're going to next. We need to have the data every year, but we we need to have that.
I think they need to be supporting, and I know we're lucky enough because Barbara is keeping a close eye on that stuff, but I think we need to be looking at it this three or four months at a time, you know, what's happening.
Well, I agree, that's exactly, inviting them to the meeting, I mean, they have a lot of meetings themselves, I understand, they're on duty, and. We hear a lot, and we all spend time, but yeah, we need to get a little more time with them actually to come here and and talk and be helped in the open, I don't think they're meetings and all that stuff, they don't get into the staff in their meetings either.
No. I read them and.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no data. Thank you for that.
Thanks, yes.
It's good, it's good work you're doing there with them.
Yeah, and they agree, because. They all want to do breakfast, Johnson, they don't like to eat. Next Thursday, uh, Wednesday or Thursday, so. But they'll let me know tomorrow, which day is right. Anything else? Rocking.
So the best thing that came out of the broadband challenge process was that, um, there's this terminology called community anchor institutions. And like, town hall is, um, the library is, all the schools are morning starters. Um, and so because they're a community anchor institution, they have to get, they're supposed to be served to certain broadband speed. Um, so we, I submitted a couple of challenges on behalf of. Marvewood and South Kent School, South Kent School isn't even listed on the map, so. Um, but Marv was, but Marv, both of the schools were not meeting, the steeds were not meeting what they said it should be, so. We'll see, and and the other thing that I learned through this whole process that CNN is actually upping the speed dramatically. Like from one gig to ten gigs, I heard that from, I I heard that from another IT person in another town. Um, so, that's exciting, so.
It's it it allows us just getting, they connected two, that's the other part.
Have they given you any kind of timeframe of when it's gonna happen?
No, they they, I talked to their director of, I guess, engineering and all that, they're still having a problem with their. Supply chain piece on the on the cabling or the on the fiber optic itself, um, you know, she seemed pretty frustrated, but, um. To stay, when I went to CCM conference, it was talked about there about, you know, getting, yeah, CM was actually a sponsor of the conference, and they got him pretty good. By a lot of other channels are waiting to do that, so, um, it's like gotten some attention at state level, seeking, you know, because it's a UConn group that's under the state. But under UConn, they're hired by UConn, but paid for by the state, so they've been a little bit lax. Personally, I think it was a little bit, they weren't paying attention to stuff, they couldn't, dealing with what they have, but not look into the normal use of the process they were going to, so. Um, I think there's, that was a step off, and I have a very specific, but then there's since December, so, yeah. They didn't say forty six months.
Come on, come on, six. That's cool, so, um, we are, the broadband committee is actually doing outreach to different towns and. And outreach to Spectrum and Frontier to find out what they're willing and interested in doing, Frontier seems very interested.
Yeah.
Is they're running fiber optic and, so we'll see, it's a great committee, they're all very hard workers.
Yeah, it's.
Very hard workers, so.
Anything else?
I do, actually, I know it's late, but I got, I got one little thing here, um, looking on our website here, I've got Andrew Fisher staring at me, so, uh, I also need no longer works here. So, uh.
Last priority, maybe.
That should probably be, yeah, I think a little bit there, and then I just, I was looking at resolutions, which is on our, our selectmen's page there. And I looked at the pollinator pathway, um, because we, uh, we agreed to that a bunch of years ago, and I think probably a bunch of this is being done. Um, I looked at the the resolution from two years ago now, um, to, you know, trying not to use herbicides, or trying to stay away from poison bait traps, things like that. Uh, you know, signage communications, explaining the town strategy with respect to native plants and pollinators, I I don't know if those signs still exist, I haven't seen. Those, but just to say that 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 was a resolution from from two years ago, and. And, you know, and and knowing that, you know, I know, uh, here's, uh, it's, there's the pride flag resolution that James Back wrote. Uh, uh, a couple of years ago, and that is actually in our, uh, that is in in our website there. But then the flag policy, which which followed that, um, actually, I, we, uh, we spent quite a bit of time on that, I think, uh, Raina Bella. Spent a lot of time on that, I remember I spent a lot of time on the flag policy, uh, because when, when we agreed to the pride flag, you know, we didn't have a policy commemorate with commemorative. Or ceremonial flags, um, and I looked at a bunch of cities and towns and things like that, Randy was involved for a long time, but there it is right there. Um, so this was in October of two thousand twenty two, that that BOS passed this one, that's not on our. Website, so kind of what I, what I wanted to say is that that on our website there, there are well resolutions. All from two thousand twenty two to twenty three, so. You know, there's there's a couple of things, I mean, I I'd I'd like to think that we're kind of remembering previous, um, you know, boards of selectmen, I mean, not even. The immediate one, last one, but even those before, there must be other resolutions that maybe we should be paying attention to, or or, and I would certainly love another board of selectmen after us. You know, and we are past things, we have, um, I would like for what our work is to be remembered. And, you know, so so, so, you know, instead of going into the notes, which I, you know, didn't, you know, dive into, which are great, actually, everything there, but but it'd be nice to have. The resolutions that we pass right on there, so that we can see it easily at certainly voters' camps, so.
But basically, a resolution is in in effect until another one is approved that changes it, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, so so, and, you know, and if there's questions that people have, or we, us, like, like, we can easily and quickly go to. What's supposed to be there, so so anyways, so there's. Talk about just resolutions and how to follow through on it and all that, so so and I just, I bring, I just bring it to our attention, so I'll get me into our attention.
Yeah, I did know, it goes like, uh, pride flag, but that one I don't know where, but I didn't, I didn't pollinate that way, and then no mobile.
Yeah. That is in there, but the flag policy one, which which, but both of them, in my mind, both were kind of together, you know, so, uh, and and we spent a lot of time on that. That's not there, um, and I don't know, but maybe, I'm sure.
I did a search of the website, and I did resolutions, and it came up.
The flag also.
Yeah, there were, there weren't twelve of them listed though, so maybe there's different ways, maybe there's order.
Oh, right, oh, so. I'll just get, I'll, I'll show you, yeah, sure, we got, we got, uh, department selectmen's office resolutions.
Yeah.
So I mean, maybe there's somewhere else, so, uh, so anyway, so it's like, like, like Andrew Fisher, like the, like the fight all this, like, it's a lot, you know, and I I'm not the guy to be being like, hey, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Hit the website, I'm not a website guy, and some people know this about me, uh, but social media, but, um, but you know, but. You know, to to get information quickly and easily, whether it's us or someone else, I think it's, I think it's work, so, um, so just, just to, I just say that, you know, just say that, that's all.
We can give you back in. Should've got some more.
Where did you see all of them? You saw all of them on.
Like if, if I went to the search bar, but I didn't see all of them, I only, I think I only saw about six.
The search. You know, and should all of them be on there, I I don't know.
I think so, I mean, it's like, I think, and I, I, the ordinance should be up on the website too, and I.
Twenty two. And we have one coordinate, yeah.
Yeah, but it doesn't show everything.
Do you know what, do you know what it says, or the order, it says, it says, it's a website, uh, in progress, you know, we've changed website page in progress.
Does it now?
Yeah, I couldn't even figure that out.
So anyways, so just to say that, you know, um, it's a lot, I mean, it it, you know, it's a lot, and if, and if, and if we need help with this, I mean, I, I've been telling people, my, my, my. Classes are coming to an end, uh, and I do have some months to actually do some stuff, so, so if, yeah.
But we are gonna apply the pride flag for June, right?
It's a ordinance.
Well, it's a resolution.
It's a, it's a resolution. So anyway, so just to, just to throw that out.
That reminds us.
Yeah, that's all, I guess, goes in in a satanic level of policy.
It's not that much.
Now we get.
Exactly, such.
So, sorry.
Okay. Thank you, though, Joyce is moving.
This is our long latest meeting, I think.
Oh, wait, two seconds, okay.
She was, she was, but she's gone, so she's not, she was aware that we were gonna, but anyway, we need to.
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion to like, there are two people that are.
Okay, um, make a motion, go into executive session for the purpose of discussing, um.
Personal.
Purpose, yeah, I need to personally executives, I discuss social services, the director's time off.
Five minutes, nine fifty.
Yeah, nine fifty, to invite also Joyce Curd in. I reckon you go, thank you.
Right, now you're.
Thanks, right, you hung out a lot longer than I thought you would. You're, you're, have anything you want to go for comment, I mean, before you go?
No, a couple of comments over.
Did you pause the recording or?
Okay, let me report out of executive session in twenty seventeen.
All right, yeah, I make a motion that the board of selectmen acknowledges a special circumstance and is allowing a one-time use of five days of PTO.
A time off, um, from the upcoming fiscal year to be used by Samantha Hassan.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion seen done, oh, in favor of the motion, hi? Thank you, thank you, um, motion to adjourn.
Oh. I'm getting team.